All right, we'll call this meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors to order June 5th, 2024. Welcome to Budget Day. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Yes, good morning. Supervisor Serna.
Here.
Desmond Frost.
Here.
Hume.
Here.
Kennedy.
Here.
And you have a quorum. This meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors is cable cast live on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel on the Comcast and AT&amp;T U-verse cable systems. The meeting is closed captioned and livestreamed at metro14live.saccounty.gov. Today's meeting will be repeated Saturday, June 8th at 6:00 PM on Channel 14. The Board of Supervisors fosters public engagement during the meeting and encourages public participation, civility, and use of courteous language. The Board does not condone the use of profanity, vulgar language, gestures, or other inappropriate behavior, including personal attacks or threats directed towards any meeting participant. Seating is limited and available on a first-come, first-served basis. Each speaker will be given two minutes to make a public comment and are limited to making one comment per agenda or off-agenda item. Please be mindful of the public comment procedures to avoid being interrupted while making your comment. To make a comment in person, fill out a speaker request form and hand it to clerk staff. The chairperson will open public comments for each agenda or off-agenda item and direct the clerk to call the name of each speaker. When the clerk calls your name, please come to the podium and make your comment. If a speaker is unavailable to make a comment prior to the closing of public comments, the speaker waives their request to speak, and the clerk will file the speaker request form in the record. The clerk will also manage the timer and allow each speaker two minutes to make a comment. You may send written comments by email to boardclerk@saccounty.gov, and your comments will be routed and filed in the record. If you need an accommodation pursuant to the Americans with Disabilities Act or for medical or other reasons, please see clerk staff for assistance or contact the clerk's office at (916) 874-5451, or by email at boardclerk@saccounty.gov. Thank you in advance for your courtesy and understanding of the meeting procedures.
Will you please join me in the Pledge of Legions?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Amen.
Welcome, everybody. We, I'm going to just go over briefly the way that today is going to look or supposed to look. We're going to first have public comments for items not on the agenda, then we will move into our budget hearing, and then we will deliberate on the budget. And if we need to come back later with recommended changes, give staff time to look into that. We will take a break and do that. And once the budget is put to bed, we will then hear the CIP, and we'll have public comment for both the CIP and the budget. That's the way it looks today, so would you please, first item, please.
Your first item are public comments for matters not on the agenda, and we currently have three public speakers. And our first person is Lisa Sanchez.
Morning.
Hello, my name is Lisa Sanchez, and I'm here today to speak on behalf of River City Waterway Alliance, an all-volunteer group dedicated to cleaning, restoring, and protecting Sacramento-area waterways. Since our launch in January of 2023, River City Waterway Alliance volunteers have conducted over 450 cleanups and removed nearly 1.6 million pounds of trash and debris. However, those immense efforts are not enough. Therefore, last year, we asked for and was granted additional funding to assist with cleaning creeks and waterways that fall outside the American River Parkway. This additional funding allowed Sacramento County regional parks to engage a skilled contractor to provide assistance to RCWA. The progress we have made since working with this contractor has been fantastic. Not only do they add additional labor, but they've also bring equipment that us volunteers rarely enjoy, such as a skid steer, mini excavator, boat, and a UTV. As a result of the progress that has been made has been remarkable and beyond our wildest dreams. In just five weeks, the contractor, working in conjunction with RCWA, has already removed an astounding 50,000 pounds of trash and debris from a 1/3 mile stretch of Steelhead Creek between West El Camino and the Arden Garden Connector. Right now, as I speak, a group of RCWA volunteers is in Steelhead Creek, working with that contractor to collectively remove more trash and debris. I wanted to be here today on behalf of all River City Waterway Alliance volunteers to thank you for providing this additional funding and to let you know how beneficial it has been. Due to the very tangible benefits, we are respectfully requesting that the Board of Supervisors include similar additional funding for this upcoming fiscal year, so we can continue this unprecedented progress. We see firsthand how neglected many of our waterways have become and are working to reverse the damage. It'll take many years of dedication and hard work to restore our waterways back to healthy levels, but we know we will get there with your support and assistance. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Lisa. Thank you for being here. Thank you for everything you guys do. I think I can speak on behalf of the entire Board, how whenever you come and present to us and you show us your work, we're all in awe and greatly appreciative of the efforts that you guys, you guys are a great organization.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Michael Alt.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Chair Kennedy, members of the County Board of Supervisors, County Executive Michael Alt with the Downtown Partnership. I'm here today representing downtown employees, businesses, residents, visitors of Sacramento. I'm sure you're aware of the recent incident that took place outside the jail this week that cost a downtown employee his life. This tragic case, we think, highlights significant public safety issues in the central city. Our downtown community has been working actively, and I will tell you, daily, to try and bring momentum and activity back to the downtown core. We're trying to get employees to come back to work. We've got millions of individuals that come downtown throughout the year and bring with them over $1.6 billion in investment. It's imperative for us that we have a welcoming environment that is highlighting the concerns of public safety. We need help. This is a crisis that is costing people's lives. The current environment with mental health, drug use, aggressive behavior is at a situation that we have not seen in years. It needs to be addressed immediately. I've had an opportunity to speak to Supervisor Phil Serna yesterday to discuss our current situation downtown. The city has offered our support and their support for efforts to elevate our current clean and safe operations, and we're asking you to consider similar, a similar commitment. What happens in downtown should matter to everybody, not just the Downtown Partnership. This is this region's downtown. It's a reflection of our community, and it's unacceptable. We've seen and made incredible strides downtown and at the partnership, but we need sustained change. We must work with both our county and city partners together to address these issues. We must establish policies and support law enforcement to manage bad behavior with real consequences and support those in most needs. These incidents, I can't tell you what they do to our region's identity and what they do to the downtown's perception. This cannot be our brand. We're better than this. Safety is a fundamental right, and we have a responsibility to do everything we can to make sure it's provided to our community and frankly, your employees as well. We need your help.
Thank you, Michael. Supervisor Serna.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Michael, thanks for being here, and as you referenced, we did have an opportunity yesterday to, to speak, and I reached out to you after understanding the commitment that the City of Sacramento, through the City Manager's Office, has made relative to enhancing safety and cleanliness in the downtown area. And I couldn't agree with you more that the county has a, an opportunity and a responsibility as much as any component part of the downtown environment to provide the resources to make people feel safe. I will just say, because I can't say too much on off-agenda, that I have since reached out to our county CEO. I had a chance to speak with City Manager Howard Chan yesterday, and I think there's a way that we can kind of match the commitment, and it's going to take some commitment by this board to do that. And so, just a preview of coming attractions for later agenda item, I'll be asking my colleagues to consider that. So, I appreciate you being here, and I look forward to hearing from our CEO about some of the ideas that he shared with me just this morning.
Thank you. Thank you collectively to this board. You've been a great partner to us over the years, and we do not discount the importance of this partnership, so thank you.
Thank you. Keanne Bliss.
I'm just going to note that we're about to have, I hear, the county's budget, which this year is projected to be at least $8.8 billion, and if you look at the recommended budget in totality, it goes to at least 1,100 pages, give or take with the attachment, or give more with the attachments if they're not included in that. And that was released on May 24th, which is less than two weeks ago. I don't think that is enough time, much less a participatory process, to allow members of the public to actually review and give meaningful contributions or feedback on what they see within this budget item. And the fact that you're consolidating it across just three days, a county like, a county with 1.5 million people with vastly like, large number of departments, when we're also, when we have a city that is much smaller in Sacramento City, that manages to spread it out over the course of a month, I think that's unacceptable. I don't think this is a participatory process by any means, and it shows in the fact that it, last year, you approved this, our fiscal year '23-'24 budget within a single day. If you're actually here, if we are, you are actually representative of the people of Sacramento, then it shouldn't be a problem to have every major department, especially the Sheriff's Department and the Probationist Department, and like, and other large departments here today to present their work, what they've act, like, what they've accomplished over the last year, as well as what they're hoping to do in the coming year, and actually share key performance metrics, which, as I look through the budget documents now, I don't really see any real key performance metrics. I think that's, like, that isn't just a lost opportunity, that's a lack of democracy, and we absolutely have to do better. You have to do better, and you don't need to approve this budget today or even this week. You have until the end of the month.
Thank you.
Is your public comments for off-agenda items?
Next item, please.
All right. For item two, you are acting as the In-Home Supportive Services Public Authority. This is to approve the Sacramento County In-Home Supportive Services Public Authority fiscal year '24-'25 requested budget and other actions.
Good morning.
Morning.
Give me a second here.
My name is John Kazitsky, Executive Director for the Sacramento County In-Home Supportive Services Public Authority. I'm here this morning to ask for your approval for the '24-'25 Public Authorities budget in the amount of $4,552,304. That's presented on the item attachment one. Our budget has a, currently has an increase, see if this will show, of $837,551, and this is a brief breakdown. These are just the items that add up to that particular dollar amount. A brief overview, the training is in part, part of the union agreement going forward. The PPE is also in part regarding the union agreement going forward. The operating expenses are just relative to salaries and benefits and overhead for the public authority. General operating expenses are copies, photocopies basically of from the print shop, facility use charges, self-explanatory, and then contract services will also include the urgent care contract that we have to support recipients when they have a last-minute need for some, a caregiver, until they can find a regular caregiver. On the revenue side, the main piece is for provider enrollment. That is a continuously growing program. This is a chart that identifies or shows our progress, so I can get that. It really shows the provider enrollment orientation process that has been going on since '09. This is a continuously growing, it's tied directly to the population. As our population grows, and more to the point, as the older population shifts in the total population, our orientation demand goes up, and you can obviously see the blip with COVID. COVID really took a hit for our office, as well as, you know, to a lot of people, and so we are in a rebuilding process, which I will show you a little bit of that in just Our registry is a main function for our office, and we have been collecting some statistics as we rebuild to give us a benchmark, so that we can monitor what we're doing and how we're doing it. One of our main focus is to try to identify where the customer is and what they need, so that we can kind of reshape our approach to attracting caregivers for our registry. So this, this dark line is really a trend line, it's just an average for the year. And then as we come into 2024, on the right side, if the average is slightly rising relative to the efforts that we're making in our registry and collecting a total population for caregivers Education is another main function for our office, and with the help of some partnerships, support from the state of California with Career Pathways, and helping to pay for caregivers to come to training, as well as give them a bonus. They also had a, ended up, the second year, they had a contract with Homebridge, which has made it a lot easier for us to get training into the community. We've got a, this is a list for just 2024. It includes, I think it's about 36 or more classes, since this is just for the, for the calendar year, and I think it's like 140-some hours of training that we're offering to our caregivers. And this is just a sample of that effort going forward. Now, Career Pathways is scheduled to end September 30th. They may have some residual money for the rest of the year. They're still in discussions, haven't heard the final outcome, but that's going to go away, and one of the requests that I had in this budget is to add a social worker to help pick up that education component. In the past, we did have two social workers to support registry and to support education, and so we're, we're coming back out of COVID with that demand starting to grow. And so I'm trying to use this lead time before we lose Career Pathways to get somebody in and get them trained, so they can slowly pick this up and keep it going.
Can I, can I, what type, I know you, I don't need the whole breakdown of 140 hours, but what type of training do we provide?
So the trainings this year has been mobility, fall prevention, healthcare, self-care. These are just the main ones. Nationally, mobility is a huge one, self-care is huge, personal care, that's specifically at the national one, as well as our advisory committee had requested to have some training specifically on that. And those are the areas that we're really trying to focus on. There are specialties. We really need to find a, a trainer who's skilled in that, certified in that, to be able to offer that, and that's one of the benefits of Homebridge being part of this whole Career Pathways, is they have able to do some training this last month in May for two weeks on those three subjects, mobility, personal care, and I think it was self-care for caregivers.
But we don't do any training because we're prohibited by law, or they're prohibited by law, to do things like injections and training and things like that, right?
So, train, yes, there are some training subjects we won't specifically support because we're not a physician. So when it comes to injections, it comes to personal care, bodily fluids, the, the program is structured that the recipient is the one who is responsible for providing that training and/or the doctor, and there is a sheet that they sign off on to accept that responsibility, to ensure that that training is provided consistent with medical care.
And that's not necessarily a, a policy or a decision of the county, that's a state issue, correct?
That's a, yeah, that's a state program issue.
Great, thank you.
So with that, I would ask that you're, without, unless you have some other questions, which I'm happy to answer, if you could, would approve our budget as presented to you. I will say that this is a proposed budget. The state will vote shortly. We are still working on some allocations. There is an expectation for our county and for all counties to receive, the public authorities to receive a little bit more money. We haven't seen that go, go away. There's been some kind of up and down with some ancillary services. So back in September, relative to fund balance, we'll be seeing an adjustment to that budget, but I don't see anything materially changing here.
Thank you. Is there any questions from the Board? Seeing none, do we have any public comment?
We do not have public comments on this item.
Is there a motion? We have a motion by Supervisor Serna, second by Supervisor Desmond. Please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Thank you.
Thank you.
See you next year.
For item three, this is the fiscal year 2024-'25 recommended budget hearings.
Let's start at page one.
I'm going to start on page one and go to page infinity, or whatever that is, so. Good morning, Board. David Villanueva, your County Executive. Before I start in my formal remarks, and we have a PowerPoint to pull up, I just wanted to show the work that's been done by so many of our staff. I mean, we, we do a great job. I represent this and come before you to present this, this budget. There's also a great summary of a 24-page summary of what's included in the budget to kind of highlight all the different things that there are in the budget. However, this can't be done without the support of all our departments. So I just wanted to first start off this meeting to acknowledge the hard work and dedication of county department heads and their fiscal staff in preparing this year's recommended budget. Their input, their judgment, their collaboration have been critical in developing the recommended budget, as this addresses important community needs under challenging fiscal circumstances this year. I would like to also thank the Deputy County Executives for the hard work that they've done, the staff of the Budget Office, the Debt Manager, and especially Amanda Thomas and the work that she's done. Without these inputs, these efforts and collaboration, preparing this budget for you, that's an incredibly important budget, as it sets the policy and direction for us for the next year, could not have been possible. So, I just want, I felt it was important to show the amount of work that goes in here and the product that comes out of this, and the importance of the teamwork that we have within the county, and they do a fantastic job in doing it. So, thank you, guys, all. With that, okay. Okay, great. So, again, I'm pleased to stand before you to present the recommended budget for fiscal year '24-'25. This is, this budget represents an $8.8 billion spending plan that reflects the county's needs to address reductions in one-time resources that have been funding ongoing programs. The work is beginning to bring the budget into balance without those one-time funds, and we're beginning this year to make the necessary adjustments for future years. Our CFO, Amanda Thomas, will provide more detail, significantly more detail, as, as we move forward after this slide. Overall, the recommended budget is aligned with the Board's priorities, and which include continuing funding of ongoing priority programs and initiatives despite need for some reductions, growth of county obligations and most critical needs, additional growth prioritized in, for the revised recommended budget, which is in September, assuming sources, resources are available, and a contingency in the amount for uncertain and consistent with, for uncertainties and consistent with the Board's policy. Amanda will be outlining the recommended reductions and growth later in this presentation. However, because the, this recommended growth, or this recommended budget does not fully fund our base budget, we are not recommending contributions to the reserve, or what some refer to as our rainy day fund for the month of June. We will do so in, as we do in every year, we'll see funding changes between now, the recommended budget, and the revised recommended budget in September, when we'll receive updates on revenue and the impacts of the state budgets and the state negotiations going on right now. With those changes, we'll, they may include additional resources, and if so, we will be making contributions to the reserve according to your policy in September. So with that, I'll turn it over to Amanda, our Chief Fiscal Officer, and again, thank you for the team and the county employees and the fiscal staff, the department heads, the Deputy County Executive and Amanda's team for all the great work that they did in preparing this great document. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Good morning, Chair Kennedy, Board members. I'm Amanda Thomas, the county's Chief Fiscal Officer, and as David mentioned, I'll be providing an overview of the fiscal year 2024-'25 recommended budget, and then after we take action on the budget, I'll also be presenting the capital improvement plan. So, starting with a high-level overview of the recommended budget. The budget is balanced as required by state law, but as David mentioned, the, the use of fund balance, which is a one-time resource in the general fund balance, means that we continue to be out of structural balance in our general fund, although the reliance on one-time resources is less in this recommended '24-'25 budget than in the current fiscal year '23-'24 budget. The tightening that we are seeing in the general fund, that continued tightening, results from a lower available fund balance and continued slowing revenue growth, as well as increased costs and obligations. As I'll describe later, the, the general fund budget includes recommended reductions resulting from both a loss of dedicated funding and lower available discretionary resources. And while some of those reductions do result in the deletion of vacant positions, no filled positions are recommended for deletion in this budget. General fund growth, or funding for new or enhanced programs, totals $50 million, with $9 million of that funded with discretionary resources recommended to, to meet the county's obligations and fund the most critical needs. And then, just finally, in terms of overview, both the contingency and the reserve recommendations included in this budget are consistent with the Board policies that were adopted last year. Okay, so before talking about specific recommendations, I wanted to first set the backdrop of the community engagement process and the Board priorities that were used to evaluate budget requests and to develop these budget recommendations. So, this really all started with the Community Engagement Plan framework that was approved by the Board in 2021 and has continued through each subsequent budget cycle. Elements of that plan include public budget workshops that provide a high-level overview of the county's budget, and then each year feature different departments of interest. So, most recently, we had one of those public budget workshops in December of 2023. We also have enhanced information that's available on the county's website, so understanding that not everyone is going to be interested in reviewing all of the pages in this detailed budget document. We do have a budget in brief, which is just a few pages and explains the county's budget at a very high level, as well as a budget explorer tool, which is kind of an interactive tool for people that want to dig into the numbers a little bit and drill down into the county's budget. And then, of course, key to understanding the community's priorities for the county's budget are the professional public opinion surveys and focus groups of county residents that we've conducted. So most recently, in October and November of last year, we did a professional public opinion survey on budget priorities that gave us a representative sample of adult residents in the county. So, so that, and that survey then was used to develop the budget priorities for fiscal year '24-'25 that were adopted by the Board in December of 2023. So those budget, Board budget priorities are, first, complying with the county's obligations, including providing mandated services, ensuring collection of revenues, and complying with the general fund reserve policy. Second, optimizing the use of county resources with budgeted service levels informed by community priorities, improving effectiveness and efficiency where possible, and limiting the extent to which reductions in dedicated revenues are backfilled with discretionary resources. And then, funding new or enhanced programs focusing on the most critical and urgent needs with the priority focus areas identified in the survey of county residents, being a county-wide focus area of addressing homelessness and its impacts and contributing factors, and an unincorporated focus area of improving the condition of roads. So these, with these priorities then being the priorities that were used to evaluate both the growth requests and the reduction impacts submitted by departments to develop the recommendations that are before you today. Okay, so stepping back to look at the all-funds budget. Total recommended appropriations are $8.8 billion, and I think it's helpful to try to break that big number down a little bit. And really, the first thing to understand is that about $2 billion of that $8.8 billion is transfers or reimbursements between funds, which is really just money that's moving around within the county's budget. So every dollar that moves from one fund to another fund requires an appropriation, and this happens when there's restricted revenue that's transferred to the general fund to fund expenditures, or when one department, a department and one fund pays another fund, a department and another fund for services. a department and another fund for services. Net appropriations excluding those reimbursements in the non-general fund budgets are about $3.1 billion, and these expenditures are largely funded by rate, fee, and other special revenue dedicated to a specific purpose. So for example, utility fees paid by customers. And then, within the general fund, $1.8 billion of expenditures are funded with non-discretionary departmental revenues, which are also dedicated to a specific purpose. So this could be from customer fees for a general fund department, but it also includes a large amount of state and federal funding, especially for the county's social services departments. Then also in the general fund, we have reimbursements from semi-discretionary restricted funds that fund about $1 billion in expenditures, and these semi-discretionary reimbursements are 1991 and 2011 realignment and Proposition 172 public safety sales tax revenue that's received from the state and then is available to fund certain programs in the county's social services and public safety departments. And then finally, discretionary resources in the general fund, including both discretionary revenues like property taxes, as well as one-time fund balance, fund about $1 billion of expenditures. And we generally refer to the appropriations that are funded with those discretionary resources as net county cost, so you'll hear me use that term in the presentation. Okay, so this chart is sort of another way of looking at that information, and it's showing us total appropriations, including those transfers, by fund type. So looking from left to right, you can see that the enterprise and special revenue funds make up about $3.5 billion of total appropriations, again, funded through utility rates, fees, and other dedicated revenue sources. In the middle, while the total appropriations there in the general fund are $3.8 billion, you can see that just $990 million of that are funded with discretionary resources or net county cost, with $1.5 billion funded with restricted funds reimbursements, which you can see separately budgeted as appropriations in the restricted funds off to the right there, $1.1 billion funded with state and federal revenue, and about $187 million with other departmental revenue. And so then, all the way over to the right, you see the $1.5 billion in restricted fund appropriations, and that includes the $1 billion for the semi-discretionary restricted funds that I mentioned, and then about $519 million in appropriations and other restricted funds.
We refer to that as the CERN chart.
It's a good one. Okay, so that $8.8 billion in total appropriations or budgeted expenditures and transfers represents an increase of $570 million, or about 6.9% compared to the current adopted budget. The general fund overall has a very modest increase of $42 million, or about 1.1%. Airport system funds have a sizable increase of about $369 million. This is due largely to the SMF Forward Capital Program. Patient care revenue is a new fund created as a result of behavioral health payment reform, with $275 million of reimbursements replacing revenue that was previously received directly in the general fund. And then, transportation funds have an increase of $32 million due largely to construction projects that are funded with a combination of revenue and fund balance. So when we net out the transfers between funds overall, there's about $6.9 billion in budgeted expenditures, net of reimbursements, and that $8.8 billion total budget includes $102 million of total appropriations for new or enhanced programs or growth, with $50 million of that in the general fund and $52 million in non-general fund budgets. Okay, so looking at that $6.9 billion in net appropriations or expenditures, this chart shows how that breaks out by functional area in the county's budget. So you can see that the largest share, 35%, is for expenditures in the county's social services departments, which include the departments listed here. Second-largest share, 31% for community services. Public safety and justice is the third-largest at 17%, and then expenditures for administrative services departments, which provide services to other county departments, represent about 11%, and finally, general government at about 6%. So turning now to look just at the general fund, as I mentioned earlier, total appropriations are $3.8 billion, but as shown, you know, the bulk of those are funded with federal, state, departmental, and semi-discretionary resources. So if we look just at the $990 million of discretionary resources available in the general fund, which are shown here on the left, we can see that that includes $904 million of discretionary revenue, $76 million of estimated available fund balance, which is the estimated amount remaining unspent from the 23-24 budget, and therefore, really a one-time source of funding. And then, $10 million, which is a planned use of the property tax system reserve that's going to fund expenditures associated with that project. So the right-hand side here shows that together, these sources fund $990 million of net county cost in the recommended budget, which reflects a base budget or the budget year cost of current service levels of $996 million, with $10 million of recommended reductions due to loss of dedicated funding for certain programs, some of which is restored with the recommended growth, and I'll detail that later in the presentation. $5 million of other reductions needed to balance the budget, and then $9 million of growth funded with discretionary resources. And you can see, looking at these numbers, that that $990 million in net county cost includes spending the entire $76 million estimated fund balance, which means that we are budgeting to spend more than we are bringing in on an annual basis. And so both David and I talked about this, this concept of structural balance, and I think this chart does a good job showing what we mean about the use of fund balance in the budget. The top of each bar here is showing the total fund balance available each year, and then the orange portion is representing the amount that's set aside in reserves each year, and the blue portion showing the amount used to fund expenditures in the budget that year. And so just looking at the totals, you can see that historically, the total unspent from the prior year was around $50 million. And then during the pandemic years, we saw a very large increase in those amounts, and that really can be attributed to pandemic-related impacts, and we've seen that drop off then in the last couple of years. So in 23-24, $140 million of that available fund balance, which was about $159 million, $140 million of that was used to fund appropriations, with about $100 million of that funding ongoing appropriations. And that $100 million compares to only $76 million of fund balance estimated to be available in 24-25. And so while that $76 million estimated for 24-25 represents less reliance on one-time funding compared to the $100 million in 23-24, it's very possible that we could end up with an even lower fund balance for the 25-26 budget, kind of looking at those historical averages. And so we really do expect this to be a multi-year effort to bring the budget into structural Looking at ongoing discretionary resources, discretionary revenues are budgeted at $904 million. You can see from this chart that property taxes account for by far the largest share of that, at about 71%, followed by sales taxes, and then other revenue and taxes. In terms of year-over-year change, that $904 million represents a $28 million, or about 3% increase compared to the current adopted budget. Property taxes of $630 million are estimated to be up about $27 million, or 4.4%. And while that's, that's still a pretty healthy increase, it is substantially lower than increases we have seen in recent years, as rising interest rates have really negatively impacted the volume of home sales. Sales and use taxes of $148 million are estimated to be up about 4%, or sorry, $4 million, about 3%, although I will say that we've continued to see some softening in the more recent actual results for sales tax revenues, and we may be looking at a lower estimate as we head into the September revised recommended budget, just based on more recent actual results. There's also a net $3 million reduction in other taxes and revenues due largely to a reduction in utility user tax and other revenue sources. So in addition to the discretionary revenues, the county also receives semi-discretionary resources, and as I mentioned, those include the various categories of 1991 and 2011 realignment, including AB 109, and also Proposition 172 public safety sales tax revenue. So we refer to this revenue as semi-discretionary because the board has some discretion to allocate this funding to programs in the county's social services and public safety departments. And it's also important to understand that this funding generally reimburses expenditures in the general fund that otherwise would be funded with discretionary resources. The one exception to this is CalWorks-related realignment, which offsets what the state would otherwise contribute. So as we look at the revenue in the semi-discretionary restricted funds, in total, it's budgeted at $993 million, and that's up about $35 million, but this is primarily a result of CalWorks-related realignment, which, as I mentioned, does not really offset net counting cost, with all of the other categories up only slightly or actually projected to decline year-over-year. The combined beginning balance of $109 million is down $57 million compared to the current budget year, and includes reserves of $79 million, which overall are largely unchanged with increases in some categories and decreases in others. Overall, the reimbursements to the general fund are $1.02 billion, which is down $15 million, or about 1.5%, and reflects a reduction in available resources for certain categories, and then a more structurally balanced budget overall for these funds. So the remaining category of revenue in the general fund is non-discretionary or departmental revenues. So this is revenue that is specific to departmental programs, and it's used to fund eligible expenditures in department budgets before the use of discretionary or semi-discretionary resources. The $1.8 billion total is a net increase of about $89 million, or 5.3%, with some of the largest increases in the departments that are listed here. And then, some departments are expecting a loss in dedicated, dedicated or what we sometimes call categorical revenue for certain programs, which either impact service levels or the use of discretionary resources, and I'm going to describe those impacts on a later slide. So turning now to look at appropriations or the budgeted expenditures in the general fund, this table shows that the total $3.784 billion reflects a base service level budget of $3.749 billion, with categorical or those dedicated revenue reductions of $10 million, other reductions of $6 million, and then recommended growth of $50 million in total appropriations funded with all funding sources in the general fund. And I'm going to describe each of these elements on the following slides. So some of the key factors that are driving general fund base appropriations, which again are the budget year cost of current service levels, include salary and benefit costs for county employees, including an assumed 3% cost of living adjustment, or what we refer to as COLA, which is actually slightly less than what the actual COLA ended up being of 3.3%. There's general inflationary impacts on the cost of services and supplies, an increase in the county's share of in-home supportive services provider payments due to a recently negotiated agreement, an increase in aid payments for CalWorks case loads, which is funded with an increase in related revenue, reductions for one-time amounts included in the 23-24 budget, and then continued ongoing funding for board priority programs such as the Black Child Legacy Campaign. Also this year, departments made adjustments to their budgets to reflect more realistic budget, budgeted amounts when compared to recent actual expenditures. And while we expect this to result in more accurate budgeting, it does allow less room in department budgets to accommodate unanticipated expenditures, and this is really important to keep in mind when considering the general fund contingency, which is recommended to increase by about $1 million for a total of $15 million. And consistent with board policy, this amount was determined based on the uncertainty that we're aware of for the upcoming budget year.
Excuse me, Amanda.
Yes.
Supervisor Serna.
Thank you. Just real quick, just since it was called out here, which I appreciate, which is the third bullet from the bottom, our ongoing commitment for BCLC. That is reflective of what I assume roughly the average of what we've been committing per year over the last three years, because back in '21-'22, we did something a little unusual. We made a commitment, even though it was a single-year budget approval, commitment over the next three years, in large part because that's what First Five, which is a funding partner for BCLC, does based on their three-year strategic plan. So it, I guess what I'm going to ask here is, does ongoing mean ongoing with that same three-year commitment moving forward, or ongoing just for fiscal year 24-25?
Right, so, so ongoing meaning budgeted in '24-25 at the same funding, you know, what was an increased funding level in '23-24, and we would consider that to be, you know, a base budgeted expenditure that, you know, moving forward into '25-26 would be part of that base budget as well.
So just, again, preview of coming attractions. So I'm going to be asking that we do something similar to what we did in '21-'22, which is, and I forgot the mechanism, it may have been in the resolution language, just in terms of making sure that there is that commitment moving forward with regard to not just this year or the next fiscal year 24-25, but '25-26, '26-27. Obviously, we're not going to be able to plug in like we didn't do in '21-'22, the full three-year number, but I want, for the record, as it relates to our budget commitment, to have that same obvious identity of Black Child Legacy being that firm a commitment so that it matches with First Five's three-year commitment. So, and that's more, that's less arithmetic, it's more language in the reso. So, thanks.
Okay, so, so looking at the categorical or dedicated funding reductions, the budget does reflect, as I mentioned, $10 million of total impacts resulting from reductions in dedicated funding. The bulk of this is $9 million for the Department of Human Assistance, and it's due to state reductions associated with CalWorks programs that were identified in the governor's January budget, and would include the deletion of 64 vacant positions. This reduction was not requested for backfill with discretionary resources. The remaining $1 million for other departments was requested for backfill and is all being restored with net county cost and recommended growth. And this includes $140,000 loss of Victims of Crime Act grant funds, funding one position in the district attorney's office, $38,000 loss of grant funding for software in the Office of Emergency Services, and then $788,000 funding loss for two and a half positions in the public defender's office due to reduction in state reimbursements. Separate from the categorical reductions, $6 million of other funding, of other reductions to net county cost expenditures are recommended to balance the general fund budget. So this includes $2.2 million in the Health Services budget unit, including costs for consulting contracts, operational supplies, and the deletion of 14 vacant positions, with the department planning to add back the most critical of these positions as either new funding is identified or less critical positions are vacated, in order to improve access to patient care, clinic workflow efficiency, wait times, and caseloads for filled positions. $1.8 million of reductions with $1.4 million in net county cost are recommended for child, family, and adult services, including the deletion of 16 vacant positions across several programs, with impacts relative to positions being filled, including delays or higher caseloads for existing filled positions. The remaining $1.5 million in reductions is spread across nine budget units and largely reflects reductions in services and reflects reductions in services and supplies expenditures, but also includes the deletion of one vacant position in the Department of Human Assistance. So while some reductions are needed to, in the general fund, we are also recommending expenditures on new or enhanced programs or growth to address critical net county cost funded needs in the general fund, and also for expenditures funded with non-discretionary resources in the general fund and other funds. So overall, across all funds, over $180 million of departmental growth requests were submitted. The recommended budget includes $50 million for recommended general fund growth, with $9 million of that funded with net county cost, and including in total 56.7 new positions. Additionally, similar to the approach taken in recent years, we're recommending that another $21 million in general fund growth be prioritized for inclusion in the revised recommended budget in September, should sufficient additional resources be available. And then the non-general fund growth represents an additional $52 million in total appropriations, including 34.4 additional full-time equivalent positions. For the general fund, the most significant recommended growth is for the departments listed here. In Health Services, $28 million of funded growth is recommended, including $18 million funded with realignment for increased acute psychiatric inpatient costs, which is a county obligation. Other growth includes $3 million in Behavioral Health Bridge Housing funding for dedicated beds at county Safe Stay communities through a reimbursement to the Department of Homeless Services and Housing. And then a combined over $2 million supporting increased services and capacity at permanent supportive housing units, and $2 million to expand a Medi-Cal-funded contract with the Sacramento County Office of Education. For Child, Family, and Adult Services, $6 million of growth, $5 million of which is net county cost, is recommended, including $3 million for contracted services to provide placements for youth with complex needs, and $1.3 million for Family Resource Center court-mandated parenting workshops. For Human Assistance Administration Budget Unit, $4 million total is recommended, with most of that being for state-funded childcare payments for CalWorks recipients, and then $100,000 of net county cost is recommended for a position in the county's Veterans Services Office. For the Sheriff's Office Budget, $4 million of total growth includes $2 million of department restricted revenue to fund a mobile command vehicle and associated equipment, and the $1 million of net county cost funding is recommended for required software expenditures and body worn camera licenses and equipment. In the Correctional Health Budget Unit, $3 million total is recommended, including $2 million of ARPA funding previously approved by the board for the medication-assisted treatment, $300,000 of net county cost for additional pharmacy positions, and then both, with both of those, the medication-assisted treatment and the pharmacy position, supporting the county's obligations under the May's Consent Decree. And then additionally, $1 million of grant funding is recommended for a new electronic health record system. For Community Development, $1 million is recommended, which is largely net county cost funded, and includes funding to support the In-Fill Acceleration Program and the Climate Action Plan, and also adding two planning technician positions, which will free up planners to focus on higher-level work and also assist the department with recruitment and retention efforts. And then finally, for Homeless Services and Housing, a gross increase of $1 million, so that's before the $3 million of Behavioral Health Bridge Housing reimbursement that I mentioned from DHS, with $500,000 of additional appropriations for Safe Stay communities funded with that Bridge Housing funding, and then $500,000 of net county cost recommended for additional administrative positions and services for this new department. So in addition to the growth included in the recommended budget, we're also recommending that certain growth requests be prioritized for funding in the revised recommended budget if resources are available. So this prioritized growth includes for animal care services, the reallocation of a veterinarian to a chief of shelter medicine, for emergency services, $500,000 for one-time audiovisual system upgrades to the county's Emergency Operations Center, and then finally, a $20 million contribution from the general fund to the roads fund, and then the associated expenditures in the roads fund for pavement rehabilitation and maintenance of county So looking at reserves in the general fund, the only recommended change is the $10 million release from the property tax system reserve. No additional reserve releases or contributions are recommended, and that's consistent with the reserve policy, which first calls for funding the base budget and county obligations before making contributions to reserves. The reserve policy would call for additional reserves in September if resources are available and before funding the prioritized growth. With this recommended budget, total discretionary reserves would stand at $238 million, with $32 million of that set aside for specific purposes, including for the property tax system. The remaining $206 million of available discretionary reserves represents about 6% of total general fund revenue, and that compares to the long-term policy goal of 17%, which would equate to about $630 million. And while that $630 million seems like a big number, this chart does help put that in context and shows that during the last recession, the cumulative loss of tax revenue to the county was over $600 million, and that was starting from a much lower base of revenues than would be the case for a future recession. Additionally, this doesn't take into account semi-discretionary revenues or other revenue sources that could be subject to the same sorts of impacts during economic downturns. So if we factored those revenues in, you know, that number would be even larger. And really, you know, the point here is the more that we can do to build up reserves, the better positioned we will be to sustain service levels during a future recession. And while we don't try to predict when a recession might occur, it is useful to look out into the future and do financial projections, just to understand how decisions in this budget year could impact future years. So the next couple of slides here are showing a multi-year sensitivity analysis for the general fund, based on assumptions about future costs and revenues, and are really meant to illustrate what might happen under those assumptions. So this chart is showing the difference between discretionary revenues and projected net county cost through fiscal year 2031-32, which is the first full year after the county's pension obligation bonds are scheduled to be paid off. And each of the three lines here represents different revenue growth scenarios, so ranging from 3% on the low end to 6% on the high end in terms of annual revenue growth. And then where these lines are below zero indicates that net county cost is projected to exceed revenues, based on the assumptions used for that scenario, meaning that we would be spending more than we're taking in and using fund balance to pay for current year expenditures, as has been the case in prior year budgets and also in this recommended budget. And you can see on the chart that for all but the most optimistic scenario, net county cost is expected to exceed discretionary revenues for fiscal year '25-'26, as well as in some future years, which again indicates that we would expect this structural balance to be an issue in future budgets as well. So the projected unrestricted fund balance, yes?
Supervisor Hugh.
Thank you. Just a quick question.
Yes.
All of the scenarios have us starting out in the hole. Is that because we're using prior fund balance?
Exactly.
Okay, thank you.
So that projected unrestricted fund balance that you see here is really a function of what we saw on the previous chart, so the difference between net county cost and discretionary resources. So in years where we would have a surplus that would contribute to fund balance, and in years where we would have a deficit that would take away from fund balance. So you can see, under the baseline scenario, the balance is not projected to increase or decrease significantly by the end of the forecast period, whereas under the conservative scenario, really, we would need to be making significant budget reductions in future years to avoid a negative fund balance. And then, you know, sort of with our current course, only the most optimistic scenario shows building reserves to the level that's likely needed to weather a future recession without a significant impact to services. So as we look forward to September and future year budgets, it will be important to minimize the use of fund balance and try to achieve structural balance and build up those reserves. And I'm actually going to skip this slide, and I think we'll come back to the capital improvement plan later. So that concludes my presentation on the recommended budget.
Thank you, Amanda. At this point, before we go to the sheriff for a presentation, are there any questions of Amanda? We will have time to deliberate, of course, at the conclusion. Supervisor Hugh.
I do have just one quick question, and I apologize. On the reserve policy, 17%?
Yes.
To what threshold is that pegged? Is that total budget, or is it obviously not?
17% of total general fund revenues, yes.
But not net county cost?
Correct.
Okay. And is there a reason why it was pegged to that figure as opposed to the net county cost?
Yes. So really, the reserve policy was developed based on sort of best practice recommendations of the Government Finance Officers Association, which recommends an unrestricted fund balance or essentially, you know, available money that could be used in the event of uncertainties or economic downturns of about two months of either total budgeted expenditures or total budgeted revenues, which usually end up being roughly equal to each other. So that's where that 17% threshold comes from, and why we're looking at the total. We do have a subset of our, of the discretionary reserves, the total discretionary reserves, which is the general reserve, and that is targeted at 10% of discretionary revenues or net county cost, and counts toward that overall 17% goal for general fund reserves. But that is the subset that's based on just the discretionary revenue portion.
Okay. And so just to kind of tease that out, theoretically then, in a doomsday scenario, there would have to be significant constriction from some of the non-discretionary sources in order for that revenue to be needed.
Correct. So when we think about the semi-discretionary revenues, those are largely based on statewide sales taxes, so likely to see the very same sorts of impacts during a recession. Similarly, you know, we know that just with state allocations in general, when, you know, the state is facing tough budget times, that can impact our revenues from the state as well. So I think, I think the understanding is that really, almost all of our revenue sources are subject to some sort of impact during economic downturns, and we should really be planning for that.
Okay. Thank you.
Supervisor Desmond.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And just to clarify, so we'll be getting, we're going to get the two presentations, sheriff and District Attorney's Office, but not presentations per se. Okay, so do you mind if I ask him nitty-gritty questions right now? I didn't know if we were going to be doing more of that later. So the first question.
We're not going to, we're going to hold off on deliberations.
Liberations, okay. Nice.
Any questions?
Yeah. Got it. A few clarifying questions on the, so the general fund growth, one area, and this is also a Siobhan thing as well, is I see we're eliminating a few vacant positions from the, certain positions from the social works, worker program in schools, but we're, on the other hand, we're growing it because of an increased, anticipated increase in Medi-Cal revenue. Is that generally accurate?
So I think you're referring to two different programs that we have going on, and one is a categorical reduction, from my understanding, and the other is our contract with SCOE to put clinicians in the schools.
Got it.
So we are working with the schools, but in different ways, I would frame it that way.
Okay, perfect. I mean, I think they're, I think they're both referred to as counselors or clinicians, but one is more for eligibility purposes. I think that's the categorical reduction one, and...
One has to do with child welfare, and one is funding SCOE to put clinicians in the schools.
Okay, got it. And I think it's important, because, you know, we did, we did hear some feedback from some organizations concerned about some of these reductions, but I want to make sure it's, it's very clear that we're also growing in other ways that are assisting that clinician in schools program, which I think is a very, very, very important one. And then the other, Amanda, on some of the other reductions that you laid out, I mean, the majority of these are vacant positions that are not going to impact current service delivery. I just want to underscore that.
Correct. So all the positions that are recommended to be deleted in this budget are vacant positions.
And there was one, however, I think, was it in DCFAS where you mentioned, there was a reduction that actually was going to impact actual current service delivery? Which one was that?
I don't recall. Those are all vacant positions, to my knowledge. I think what I, what I was trying to say is if you, you know, if you think of these as being, as you said, reduction of vacant positions, there's no, not currently service being delivered because those positions aren't filled. If those positions were to be retained and filled, obviously, there would be a service level that would be, you know, would be different than what you're able to accomplish with the deletion of those vacant positions, right? So that service level, relative to the positions being filled, that's where that difference is.
Okay, great. No, I understand. First, maybe I just didn't, didn't hear it correctly, because I thought you did make a distinction between one reduction that's related to a vacant FTE versus a reduction that's related to a current service we're providing now, so. Okay. And then another, so on the roads question, which is one of this board's priorities, and certainly, I think, well, priority of mine, of course. So last year, and I got some correspondence, I think David through DOT about some of our expenditures in prior years towards the roads. During the June budget last year, I think we, the board, approved some funding to offset the costs or to pay, to pave the other side of the roadway, say, if utility goes in and chews up the roadway. But the big chunk, the 20 million, was not till September budget, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And I'm very supportive of, well, it was 20 million, but I think an additional 5 million for the utilities.
In September.
In September. So it was actually a total of 25 million in September, I believe. And I'm very supportive of that, and I'm certainly supportive of waiting till September. But one thing I'd like to, maybe Dave, you could opine on this, we've, I've talked to you a little bit about it, is, you know, we have almost a billion-dollar maintenance backlog. We get about 30 million, just shy of 30 million a year, I think, from SB1 funding, and it takes close to 60 million to maintain that maintenance backlog, and that's where we're kind of under the gun. You know, we don't have a high level of certainty that we're going to get funding from other sources, whether that's through SECOC or other grant programs. So I, you know, I feel there's, there's a lot of pressure on this board to continue dedicating some general fund dollars towards this. But could you, or Dave, is there, does it make one difference, a difference one way or another if we engage in this discussion now about somehow setting aside money, money in June versus waiting in September?
It really doesn't, Dave DeFonte, Deputy County Executive, it really doesn't make a significant difference. You know, DOT has a lot of work between the point of receiving that allocation and setting the projects up to actually deliver by way of going out to bid, et cetera. So really, we're looking at, you know, spring by and large, regardless, for the beginning of project delivery. So whether it's June or September, there's not a real significant difference there. And DOT has done a great job in the past of getting that money out the door and onto the roads, and they'd do just the same this year if that comes their way in September.
Okay. Now, I appreciate that, and I think it was important to get that out there publicly. I mean, they have, they have so much in the pipeline right now, their bandwidth is so full. It, operationally, and from what the public would see on the streets, it doesn't make a difference whether we do something now or in September. It's not going, it's not going to set us back, right? Okay. So I appreciate that. And then to get into a little more nitty-gritty is, I thought I saw, we heard from River City Waterway Alliance folks, and I thought I saw something from Liz, that there's actually some, this board set aside some funding for them last year. I forget what, how much it was, but there's still some that is unspent and is still available. Is that, is that accurate?
Yeah, your board set aside, I believe it was $500,000 for additional monies to help with cleaning up waterways outside of the American River Parkway last year. That money now lives in base budget, so there is addition, there is that money moving forward into next fiscal year as well. So it did take us a few months to get a contractor on board and get that work actually out the door, so that started several months ago, and I think that's what was alluded to earlier, that we're now seeing the impacts of that money in our waterways, and obviously the glowing praise you got earlier for that.
Right. Okay. No, I appreciate that, too. It's, there's, there's still resources available for that purpose, yeah. Okay. And then I think that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Supervisor Serna.
Thank you. Just want to get some clarification from you.
Just want to get some clarification from you, Amanda, based on your response to Supervisor Hume. I'm not sure if you were alluding to fiscal year contingency or not, but what I'd like to know is, how are we treating the fiscal year contingency, separate from reserves, something different, as a contribution to fund balance, if at all?
So are you, are you asking about...
So if we don't utilize any or a portion of the contingency for the fiscal year, where does it, where does it go?
Right. So any unutilized portion of contingency really would be like any other appropriation that we didn't spend all of, so that would go to fund balance at the end of the year. Yes.
Yeah, great. Thank you.
Okay. I'm going to ask a really basic thing, but it's more for the viewers, if there are any, on Channel 14. But we refer to a lot, you know, the June budget, the September budget. That's not a normal thing that every organization does, so can you just give a 30 second, you know, why it is we have a June budget hearing and a September budget hearing?
Sure, I will try to. And, you know, I have to say, I hope there are at least a few viewers, because this is my kids' first day of summer break, and if they're not at home watching.
Oh, they're asleep by now.
It's true. It's before noon. So, yeah, so we do a budget in June, what we call the recommended budget, and then when that gets approved, the approved recommended budget, because our fiscal year, so that, you know, our year for financial purposes starts on July 1st, so we need to have a plan for that fiscal year before July 1st. But there are a lot of things that we don't know as we stand here today that we're going to get better information about. So one of those being, we've talked about fund balance, so we're estimating what the fund balance is, but we won't know that for the general fund or for any of the county's funds until we actually close this current fiscal year on June 30th. And so then we have actual numbers that we can use to make adjustments to the budget to reflect those actual results. The other big thing that sort of we don't know yet right now is what the state budget is going to be. So we have some indication of things that were proposed in January. We also know some things that were included and the governors may revision, but we know that there's, you know, negotiations about what that final budget, state budget will be. And so once, once that is concluded, then we also have that information to reflect in the September revised recommended budget. And that, and so we would come, we come before the board in September with those recommended revisions, and then the board formally adopts the budget, so what is called the adopted budget, and that's the official budget for the fiscal year.
Thank you. Perfect. So that's the end of your presentation. Up until, we'll do the CIP later, then, low here from the Sheriff's Department.
Good morning, Chair. Good morning, Board members. It's nice to see you this morning. Me and the sheriff flew back from, we were at the CSSA conference in Palm Springs. We're supposed to be there until Friday, but we told them we had to leave early because we, this is literally the most important meeting we have every year, and the sheriff got a bug. So you got me today. But I always like to come and talk to the board and inform them where we're at.
Thank you for bringing the heat from Palm Springs. Appreciate that.
It was a dry heat. It wasn't that bad. So, nice hotel, so it was all right. So when we started this year's budget process with the CEO, you know, we submitted our AGRs, and then, you know, me and the sheriff have been around for a while, so it was no, it was no surprise to go, okay, if you had to cut, where would you cut? And so we presented a plan to the CEO's office about where we cut. Our primary responsibility, as you know, is the welfare and security of the facility and the welfare of the inmates that we have in our custody and our 911 response to service. So unfortunately, our only proposal at that time to get to where we were at that percentage they were asking at the time was to cut, was, it's not an essential service, but I think it's a vital service, especially to a lot of the board members, was the hot team and the pop teams. Because those, even though they're important, I think we've been effective over the last year and a half almost, seems like a couple of months since we've been here. I think we've made some really good moves on that, understanding that it's not a crime to be homeless, but it is a crime to prey on the homeless, and we owe the housed and unhoused a fair shot at quality of life, so that's how we approached that. Fortunately, the CEO said, that's not happening. We appreciate all your work with that, and we appreciate your work in this budget process. So mainly, this presentation is going to be informational. We're not really asking for anything at this point, but as the year progresses, you'll see that we have some real challenges going into the next fiscal year and beyond. So start out with, you probably already know this, that county population since 2008 was 1.4 million. Now it's currently 1.6 million, so there's been a growth of 200,000 increase since 2008. But there's been an 8% decrease in our sworn staff. This statistic's like really important to the Sheriff's Department. What that equates to is in 2008, we had 103 more sworn staff than we do today with an increase of population. Some of the good news behind that and some of the things that the Sheriff's Department has done for the last few years is they've converted some of those sworn positions. Most of them, if not all of them, are our professional staff, sheriff's records officers who actually work the control booth in the jails, and it helped us, it helped us mitigate, we're not there yet, but it helped us mitigate the minimum staffing requirements under the May's consent decree. This chart will show you where we haven't been able to make up since the recession in 2008. For instance, in 2008, we've seen a decrease of our sexual assault bureau detectives at 42%, high tech crimes, which is the new way of doing law enforcement, by the way, like internet crimes against children and stuff, I mean, keeps us busy all the time. We see, we've seen a 37.5% decrease, decrease. Child abuse, all these were actually asked in the AGR, and because of the state of the budget, they were denied at this point. But child abuse, child abuse is one of the sheriff's top priorities. As you know, when he was here, he was ICAT commander, and we're really focused on keeping our children safe and putting people, quite frankly, behind bars that sexually and physically abuse children. And then our narcotics has dropped 61% since 2008. So that's a level of staffing that hasn't recovered from 2008, so makes up for a lot of the 103 deputies that we don't have now.
Excuse me, Under Sheriff, Supervisor Desmond.
Thanks, Under Sheriff. I just want to understand the chart. So these specialty positions, you're unable to fill those internally because of, largely because of the vacancies that still exist in the department? Because these are not specifically allocated positions in the budget, are they?
No.
They're not? Okay.
So we haven't recovered from 2008.
Got it.
We'd like to get them back, and with the population growth, there, I mean, it's common sense, there's more crime, right? With population growth, there's more crime and keeps on happening, and we don't have the resources to properly investigate things like child abuse or homicide investigations. Or now with the advent of fentanyl, right, and methamphetamine coming back, we don't have the resources to do what we used to be able to do in 2008. Some good news, potentially, just like every other county department, every other private business, since COVID, it's been hard to hire people. We routinely, prior to COVID, and even prior to that, it wasn't all about COVID. We get less people interested in being in the law enforcement career. For instance, every month, we have a testing process at entry level to get potential new recruits. We'd have 102 people, 100 to 200 people show up to take that test. Just as early as last year, we might be lucky to get 40, 50, and you know the stringent background that law enforcement has to go to, we just can't hire anybody. Good news is, beginning mid last year, we started seeing people come in the hundreds again. What that means is, starting August, our academy is truly a regional academy. We can have 70 recruits in three academies a year, but about 30 of those spots are held for outside agencies. That's a post requirement for us to have an academy. We have to have outside agencies, because only large agencies, and not all large agencies even have academies. So we're one of the, I think, one of the only six academies in the state with, because of an agency our size. We're going to be back up to 70 recruits in August, and I think it's going to, it's going to hold that line, hopefully, all the way through next year, and the type of candidates we're getting are better also. So we're seeing, it looks, the future looks bright in that area. What that will mean to the budget, obviously, a lot of what we do now, because we are understaffed because of the May's consent decree and have to have minimum staffing, we use a lot of salary savings and extra help to pay for overtime and extra help. It's a good problem to have, but that salary savings is going to go away if it holds, that we keep on filling our academies up. An interesting note, Sac PD was a regional academy, too, and this year, because of their budget cuts, they had to close that down, and they're just training their people now. So we're in a good spot with that. Another bright spot that we did this year, we are the only sheriff's office in the entire state of California who's been certified to have a security officer academy. And we got that through post, and why that's important to us is because we use a lot of security officers. And later in, later in the presentation, I'll tell you, some way we're trying to be innovative in doing that, but we use them in the jails, we use them in the court, we use them here. So now we're going to be able to be self-sustainable on the security officer front, which helps overall, it's cheap, it's cheaper labor, to be honest with you, but they have a critical, critical function with the Sheriff's Department here, so that was good news. And I missed that slide. Projected, this will affect this fiscal year, a lot of this stuff. And all these are contracts. I want to make clear that they're contracts, right? But just the new courthouse is opening, projected probably November or December this year, you know how that always gets pushed out. But what they're requesting is 27 new deputy sheriffs to fill the courthouse. I'll go, I'm going to jump this next slide real quick so I can put this in perspective. So right now, our vacancies are 100, these are funded positions. We have 109 deputy sheriff's vacancies, nine sergeants' vacancies, 15 security officers, and 14 sheriff records officers. With these new contracts coming online, we're going to need a new captain's position, two sergeant's positions, 30 new deputy sheriff's positions, and 13 security officers positions. So in context, 30 new deputy sheriff's positions is going to be an entire academy that would basically, not just all those people in it, but those positions basically allocated just to staff the new courthouse. So we're still playing from behind a little bit. If we didn't have the projections that we think we're going to have with academies, next year at this time, I'd be standing here and saying, hey, we're 140-plus deputies down. That's a lot for our agency. That's bigger than most agencies in the state of California with police departments.
Those contracted services, are they revenue neutral?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Right, David? Yeah, I just...
That would be our goal.
So the next, the next area that I want to hit on, and this is a big one, it's something that I think most county agencies are facing, is infrastructure challenges. So we just left the ones that are, I'm just going to present the ones that are critical on here, and there's some things, hopefully by now, the board knows that the Sheriff's Department tries to solve their own problems and go forward and bring solutions. One of our biggest problems is the academy, right? I just talked about, we're having a full academy, we're going to be having 70 recruits three times a year at the academy. We have a security officer academy out at Riverwalk, too. We don't own that facility. It's owned by the Regional County Sanitation District, it has been for years. We pay a month to month, but they could kick us out at any time. So we're constantly looking for new ideas. As a matter of fact, Metro Fire has a new site. They invited us out to look at it. We'd have to build it from ground up. It'd be $20 million. I don't think anybody has the appetite to do that right now. So we're continually looking for new sites, because we can get a 30-day notice to quit, and we'd have to find a new academy. So I think it was important for the board to hear that, that that's out there.
I think you have five members of the board that would advocate for you on that one, so.
All right, yeah, exactly. I like that facility. That's where I graduated from the academy, and don't age me in 1985. So the one that actually concerns me personally the most is our property warehouse. Our property warehouse has thousands and thousands of pieces of evidence. Some of that evidence, the cases have been adjudicated, some of it haven't. It goes to everywhere from petty theft crimes to homicides, to sexual assaults, sexual abuse. So we keep all kinds of property out there. We keep guns, we keep clothing, we keep seized property, we keep body fluids, we actually keep body parts out there, right? And here's the good news about that. The property warehouse facility that we have now, if we, if we were able to dump a lot less than what it would cost to move, we did, we found a place that would cost us 20 million, also 20 million to move to a new property warehouse, because we have to meet certain specifications with the law, we can actually make that work. And that was part of the AGR request, too, is to have better security out there. The CEO's office did approve cold storage for us out there. There's three ways you keep evidence, room temperature, cold storage, and freezer. We have no cold storage for an agency our size. But thanks to the budget request and the approval of that, we're going to have cold storage now. Our biggest problem, though, comes down to staffing. It's like being a hoarder, right? You say, hey, I have to move because I can't keep all the junk that I hoard. And as we did an audit on the property warehouse, we found that we can get rid of about like 70% of that property. We don't have a space problem at that point. What we have is a staffing problem, and part of the AGRs was to ask for, I think we asked for like 13 or so sheriff's records officers to start clearing the property house, because we're full of the brim now. So that's something that's coming, but I think it is positive to know that we don't have to move. We just have to clean our house. We have to have a garage sale, basically, but we need the bodies to do that. Our north station, I don't know if any of you have been out there lately, but it's very dilapidated. We had architectural designs come out there and look at it. You need 100 square feet per person. We have 209 people out there. It's 14,000 square feet, so we need 21,000 square feet. So about 7,000 square feet are a third of that from being legitimate, right? So anything could happen out there. I don't like the word, but we could, we could get challenged or sued on that, because we don't have the adequate space per the county to have that many people out there. And that 14,000 includes the garage. It's not even a workspace. Some of the pending projects that we have, we have, we did get sued. Oh, thanks, Rich. Thanks, Supervisor. Some of the pending projects that we have are, the range lead abatement, we got sued out there because a couple, a couple employees got lead poisoning. So we had, we had a company come out and do an assessment of it, and if you've been to our range, a lot of it's grass, and the lead just stays in the grass. And so that's a project that we have to get done. The problem with that, and this could be a larger discussion here today or later, is that that project started out for just pouring concrete, for not tearing the existing concrete up, but removing the grass and tearing the concrete started out at 400,000, and now it's at 600,000 just within a couple of months. We don't know why. And that's concerning to us that we're being charged so much for that project. And so the sheriff has tasked me and some other people looking into that, and I'm looking into that with the CEO's office.
And are you coordinating with our environmental management on that?
No. But that, but that would be something that we would do with the CEO's office.
Yeah. Just because, I mean, we went through in the, in the city, in the district I represent, we went through a firing range lead issue that was a city project. we went through a firing range lead issue that was a city property, and so they've got some experience in dealing with this very specific issue.
Yeah, and make no mistake, our biggest, our biggest problem is the cost and the changing costs, and how much we're asking to do something that we think that we could get at a better price to get done. But that's not happening right now. We got, last year, as you know, or you might remember, we got $105 million from the state and from Congress to build an active shooter training facility out at the range. That was very timely because now Post requires agencies to train active shooter in their academies, and we don't have a facility. The costs that we got, and I don't want to get, I mean, I will, but I won't get into all the numbers. The costs that we got to do that project from DGS were ridiculous. And.
Supervisor Desmond.
I'm going to follow up on that. I mean, I had a discussion with the sheriff, I think Supervisor Hume, and I both did something about some DGS costs, but I think a little different context. But when you, when you say that, that, what do you mean by that? I mean, and how do you compare that? How do you know those costs are astronomical?
Well, again, we've been around a while, right? And we know how much things cost generally. We're not contractors or things like that. But if I can, a couple examples, right? So one, to, to just place this active shooter facility, we had DGS that come out and do a site survey. They came out twice, and we got billed $18,000 for it, just to come out and do a site survey. We had another project at the range where we had a very simple project being put in out there, had to do with light poles and electricity and that. And we got billed from DGS for that, and we found out they didn't do the work. SMUD did it. So this is a.
Okay, so you're, you're, okay, so you're, that is what we had talked to the sheriff about. So you're talking about costs charged by the county to the sheriff's department even to come out and have these discussions and evaluate these things, which is, which is, you know, commonplace, but obviously I'm assuming it's all proper and appropriate and reasonable. I thought, I thought maybe you were talking about the cost maybe to actually do the project itself, what that might cost, the cost to sheriff's department, if we did that internally through DGS versus, you know, another, a third party or something. That's what I thought you were referring to.
I am. So let me see if I get your, your, your understanding right. So we have to use DGS for these projects, right? First right of refusal type of thing. So they come out, they give us a price, it's astronomical. We have 100, we have $1.5 million where we know we can build what we need to build for a lot less than that. And then the amount that's coming back because of percentages added on top of the project would never happen in the private sector, ever.
Okay. And I know this isn't a budget request, but I'd like to follow up with our county exec and maybe Eric about this at, at some point, maybe with the sheriff's department.
Absolutely. All right, the fun stuff. Corrections and Consent Decree. I hate to coin a phrase. I try to stay away from that, but this is absolutely what keeps the sheriff and I up at night. When we came into office a year and a half ago, I can tell you that just by the amount of time that me and the sheriff have been over at both facilities, dealing with the May's consent decree and cleaning our own house, we've done a lot of things to clean our own house with this, is that we've been over there probably 100 times, or the branch jail 100 times. And the reason that is, is because we know this is the underbelly, underbelly of liability for the county. I can't think, looking at other agencies, including CDCR, other agencies around the country who went to receivership, it totally, CDCR is a different thing because this state has tons of money. Not this year, but they have tons of money. But with these other agencies that have went into receivership, either it's partial or full, it's totally devastated everything, everything that the CEO has stood up and asked you guys to fund today. Because when you're under receivership, we have no choice, and that scares us. It goes not, not only from the sheriff's department as far as responding to 911 calls for service, but all our contracts, everything, and all the other social services programs in the county. I know you know this, but the sheriff, if you remember last year, he's so concerned about this, especially over adult correctional health, when all our inmate deaths were medically related, but the sheriff has taken the blame for it. He stood up and he told the public about it. That's how bad this concerns us, with adult correctional health, May's consent decree, how slow it takes us to get projects done. I know everybody's working hard, but as the sheriff said it best this morning, his concern is, they understand it, you understand it, but do the people really, does, does everybody that's invested in this problem really understand the gravity of what we're looking at if we lose control? One of the ways that we're trying to mitigate some of the things with May's is when we came into office, when he came into office and I came with him, our inmate welfare fund had a ridiculous amount of money in it. It had $14 million in it, nobody was spending it. So we started spending it. I have a list of that, if anybody's interested in it. I can go over some of the projects, like we have three yards. Part of the maze was, we're not getting people, we're not getting the jail population out for enough yard time and stuff like that. So we spent eight, we were spending $880,000 to bifurcate the three yards to make six yards. We built privacy booths. That project, the splitting, splitting the yards is very slow, right? That's still in the process. It was approved over a year ago. I don't, I don't know from outside of our control where that project's at, how, when it's going to get done with the timelines. And I can go on and on about this. But the good news is, is that we're using that IWDF money, even stuff as simple as clothing closets. We didn't have a clothing closet. And when we, when somebody would get arrested, booked, and serve their time in the summertime, and they were released in the wintertime, we were releasing them in summertime clothes. That doesn't happen anymore. We release them in worn clothing and stuff like that. Stuff like, one day, the sheriff and I were walking through the main jail, and those pods are huge, right? And the TVs are this big. Go, that's unacceptable. So we bought the inmates big TVs with earphones. So that's how we're using the inmate welfare fund. May's consent decree related with the Lexipol program. We got here only 14% of our policies, we're supposed to be 100%, only 14% of our policies, and this is a, this is demand from PLO and DRC, that our jail policies all be done. So we restructured that whole unit. We took up, because you can pay inmate welfare fund, you can pay for positions. We put a lieutenant over there because our problem is, we had a lack of a command structure, right? And we recognized that, so we put a lieutenant over there. I will tell you, this September will be 100% done with that project that's taken six years. And, and this, the end of this year, we'll be done with it. So you have IWF, IWF money, you have AB 109 money. Both are, both are, they have different structures, different definitions, but both of those are to, for inmate welfare. And with AB 1, IWF money, we will be out of money because of the route we're spending it. That money comes in from like commissary, phone calls, that type of stuff. It all goes back into the inmate welfare fund, right? AB 109 money obviously comes from the state, and it, and it fluctuates, but at least we get something. This year, the state cut us $10 million, you know, because I, AB 109 money goes across several county agencies. Cut us $10 million. The sheriff's department took 100% of that, plus another $3 million. So we took a $13 million cut on the AB 109 money. And we've, the CEO's been gracious, met with the sheriff, met with me, and we said there's a better way that we can work around this AB 109 IWF by shifting some of the costs on IWF over to AB 109. And we're very hopeful, hopeful that that happens. So again, we're trying to fix our own problems, especially as it, as it comes to May's consent decree. And hopefully we'll have a good report for you when we come back next year. I, I talked about this already a little bit. Expected county population growth, like I said, it went from, it went up 200,000. By 2023, if that rate continues, we'll be at 1.8 million. A bigger, a big concern for the sheriff, and he wasn't here to have these conversations. He had one of them with the board publicly. We're very concerned. We're not saying, we're not saying we don't support anything, but we're very concerned about a report that the board relies on that doesn't account for population growth when you're building a new annex. We've talked about it. I don't think we've ever seen a project this magnitude that doesn't account for population growth. And that, that's a, that's a fear for us because if, from our standpoint, if we continue to go down that road, we'll build a new facility, but we'll still be at the fear of receivership. The medical treatment is always a big deal for us. I think I've told the board before, I've been up and down the state for the last year talking to other sheriffs about adult correctional health. It's a mess everywhere. Some counties do it like us, some privatize, and some do a hybrid. The request is, and we've made the request to CEO's office, and they've been gracious to allow us in on that, is that we have a seat at the table on those discussions. Because just the amount of time and energy and information and talking to other sheriffs who are under consent decree and those that aren't or being threatened of, I think there's some value in the knowledge that we've gained about how we give our inmates the best medical care and avoid receivership. Man, I'm not doing very good with these slides. Apologize. I'm not a slide guy. So we are, like I said, we do do our own diligent. We're very active and requesting funding outside of the county. As I said, we got 1.5 million dollars last year for the active shooter training center. We, I will say one more thing about that. We're starting to get questions. Assemblymember Wen and Bera, Congressman Bera, are the ones that got us that money, and they, they're starting to ask questions, how's the project going? That puts us in a real, really uncomfortable situation. We got 9.4 million in organized retail theft grant. We're doing good things with that. We actually brought the governor's staff out on several things, but on specifically this one, to do ride-alongs and to see what we're doing with the money. And the comment was pretty cool. It was like, at least you guys are doing something and not throwing your sucker in the sand because of Prop 47. So we're working. We're working to use the resources we have. The DA's been phenomenal with us on these projects, even though they're misdemeanors most of the time. Our DA is very supportive on making sure that people that commit crimes get held accountable. And so that, that was a good win for us. One of them that I'm really excited about is, right now, just, because we have a, we have a marine detail. Right now, we have over 100 cars at the bottom of the river in the delta, just in our jurisdictional area. The amount of envi, and it's our responsibility to do recovery, the sheriff. It's our responsibility to do recovery. And so we get them, but we prioritize them like if there's a body in the, if it's not a rescue after the first hour, if they don't pull somebody out of the river, it becomes, it goes from rescue to recovery, and it's our job. So if there, it's evidentiary value, or there's body in a car, we prioritize with that. But with the size of our marine detail, the, it takes special tow trucks to get those out. We thought this was a good ask this year, and we're actually getting a lot of play with it. The congressional ask is from Ms. CEO's office. This is near and dear to her heart. And just the amount of gasoline, oil, rust, everything that just sits there for years, we want to, we want to clean our rivers up. So that's the ask we have, and I think, who knows at the state level? But we've had the state out to look at the river and stuff like that, but on the congressional level, we're having a lot of hope that we get some help here. Okay, last slide, then I'll sit down. This is something that goes back to when we were doing our transition. And we went out to Rio Consumes Correctional Center. I worked there '86, '87, '88, way back there. And one of the facilities there is called the Roger Baumann Facility. It's 256-bed facility. When I was taking the tour with the sheriff, we were told that that facility was closed because PLO and DRC didn't like it. They didn't like what it looked like. Researching that with the CEO's office, none of that was true. And then we were told it was closed because of asbestos problems. We researched that, none of that's true. And so we have a facility out there, and instead of just throwing inmates back in there, the sheriff, the sheriff's, this is an early plug, right? The sheriff is looking at opening that along with the DA as a mental health, addiction treatment facility. And so we're meeting with some of the board supervisors out there coming up and taking a look at it, walking through it. We'll start looking at what that would cost to revitalize it, because it is an old jail. It looks like Alcatraz, right? And, and so you have to come up to, but there's no reason that facility couldn't be used to help people with mental health issues who are in jail because of crimes, or addiction issues who are in jail because of crimes. And, and the sheriff's pretty adamant that if that goes forward, he's going to really push for a privatized medical care on that, not a county one. And so that ends my presentation. Anybody have any questions?
Supervisor Hume. Thank you, Chair. I want to start at the last item because I have had a conversation with Deputy Sheriff Peterson, as well as the sheriff, on the RBF. And first of all, what do you see as the path forward, or what, what would be needed? We are going to go out and tour it and, and see what would be needed to get it up and going. And then my second question would be for county staff, as far as if we were to look at a contract model to staff that facility, are we able to do that and not run afoul of 71J, given that it's a facility that's currently not being used?
The first question I can answer, the second one I can't.
Right.
I kind of know what the answer is, but the first one is, we don't know yet. We do know that the facility isn't under the May's consent decree, number one. And number two, we do know that it can be operational. We just don't know how restructuring that physically would look like. Obviously, if you go out there right now, there's, there's, there's cells with six to eight beds in them and an open toilet. Obviously, with modern policing, we're not going to have an open-air toilet, right? So those are the kind of things that we'd be looking at about restructuring, maybe shrinking the number of beds for more space and stuff like that, especially if you have people with HIPAA issues in there that need some privacy, that type of stuff. But it's just a shame to see the facility just sit there and not being used.
Agreed.
Supervisor Hume, on the 71J issue, that allows us to contract out. There's an analysis that we do before we do the contracts, and we'd have to look at the specifics of those services and the impacted unions before we can make a determination on that.
Fair enough. Thank you. Supervisor Desmond.
Real quick, and, and thank you for the presentation. On the last point, it's interesting to me how it kind of dovetails with what we might be discussing later today in the context of DSP and what happened in downtown Sacramento and the impacts, you know, from the jail. We've had a lot of discussions here, I think in this chamber, about innovative ideas, how we could meet the obligations of May's, but more importantly, re-envision how we help people who end up getting caught up in the criminal justice system and have underlying behavioral health issues or addiction issues. So, look forward to the conversation. It's all about money, obviously. I, I've had conversations, I know you have, and probably Supervisor Hume with Congressman Bera, but now that's, I know Supervisor, or Congressman Matsui's district. But I think it's, it's, I'm excited about the discussion and exploring this, so, thank you.
All right, any other questions? Yes, CEO.
I'd just like to thank the sheriff's department and their executive team. We did meet with them a couple of weeks ago and go over several things. And I appreciate the collaboration that we've had with them, and it's been fantastic, more than I've seen in previous years. So thank you, Under Sheriff. But on the DGS invoices, I did hear about this last Friday. We are looking into it, so we are, we are looking into it, and we are working with the sheriff's department. On the construction side, and the, I can't remember the term, astronomical price increases, I think we've seen that in a lot of other areas that's been before your board, especially in the last six months. So I think there are cost increases out there. I don't know if that's what's happening, if these are cost increases, but we'll definitely look into. look into it and get to the bottom of it, so thank you.
So on that, I was going to bring it up later, but since you brought it up, you know, I've had issues with our DGS policies in the past when it comes to setting up our tiny homes projects and so forth. I do think we need to look as a county at the role of what DGS is and really identify where their strengths are, and they have strengths. I don't, I'm not dumping on DGS here, but, you know, perhaps new construction is not something that DGS should be the point on. But I think we have to have that discussion and see where there's places where we could create some efficiencies and maybe go outside of DGS to do that.
I agree. And I'd just add that Sylvester Urs, Mr. Fidel, or Dr. Fidel and I had this conversation just last week about doing exactly that and looking at that. So thank you for your support, and you'll probably see something from us.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Under Sheriff.
Thank you.
Next, we will hear from our district attorney.
Good morning. I really appreciate the opportunity to come before the board this morning to talk about some of the fiscal issues that we've seen this last year and this coming year. I do want to start off by really thanking the CEO, David Villanueva, his staff, the chief fiscal officer, Amanda Thomas, and Eric Jones as well, the liaison. The relationship this year in terms of dealing with the fiscal challenges that we have and that they've had to balance over this last year, this coming year, there's been a great level of communication, transparency, and working together. And I really appreciate the fact that you've tried to balance all of that. I do want to sort of address a few things. When we talk about the core mandate of the district attorney really is to ensure public safety while balancing the fair administration of justice. And in doing so, I want to review a little bit about some of the things that we've done this last year, but also focusing on the coming year and how it relates to the fiscal situation that we're in. There are really three themes that we focused on this last year and this coming year. One is protecting people, two is connecting communities, and the third one is preserving promises. So when we're talking about protecting people, this last year, the district attorney's office, we filed 10,000 misdemeanor cases and 7,000 felony cases. So we do prosecute cases, but we actually decline more cases than we prosecute, because when we look at cases, we make sure that we are discerning, that we file cases where there is sufficient evidence. And our decline rate this year was higher than in previous years. So we are refining and making sure that we are fair in the administration of justice. But when it comes to protecting people, we continue to prosecute child molester rapists, murders, and people who engage in drive-by shooting and gang violence. But in addition to all that, we continue to also protect both in the courtroom and outside the courtroom. So one of the things that we did, and I wanted to tell you a moment, that within this last week, we had one of our young prosecutors, Adriana Garcia, who is fluent in Spanish. And she went out to a predominantly Spanish-speaking school and presented what we call the I-Smart program. And the I in smart stands for internet. And it talks about the cyberbullying, it talks about the predators that are online, it talks about how social media will sometimes addict our children and shape how they view themselves and the world around them. And so Adriana was in a predominantly Spanish-speaking class, and she was speaking in Spanish presenting this. And at the end of it, we had two students come up to the principal and report that they had been extensively bullied online and caused tremendous distress to them. So we protect people, but we also try to save lives as well. And this was an example of not only working inside the courtroom, but outside the courtroom in terms of protecting people. Over the last year, and as we continue to do, one of the things that we're working on is we partnered with an organization known as FineHelp to connect individuals in need with the services. So together with FineHelp, we actually developed an app that serves domestic violence victims, so that domestic violence victims can go onto this online website and get connected to shelter, shelter services that are culturally competent, whether it's My Sister's House, Weave, Family Justice Center. But the domestic violence victim can also look on this app and find out whether or not their abuser is still in custody or out of custody, whether or not, you know, the next court appearance, and also get restraining orders. And so this is a great app that we've developed. We've also expanded that to human trafficking in this last year. And in the next, by the end of this week, we are in Elder Abuse Month. We will be announcing that through the use of this app in the DA's office, we will establish an app for elder abuse victims and how to report and get services for elders, because one in 10 victims, one in 10 individuals that are above the age of 60 are suffering from elder abuse, and they get grossly underreported. And in the last year, I've actually expanded our elder abuse unit and added an additional prosecutor to that unit. So we talk about protecting people, connecting communities, and also preserving promises. And I do want to note, when it comes to preserving promises, one of the areas that we have all heard about and seen is really our unhoused crisis. And I think the latest point in time count came out this morning, and we actually saw a 29% decrease in the unhoused population in Sacramento County. And that is a direct result of several things. Number one, with the work of the board supervisor and the county in terms of providing those shelters and the services, the collaboration with the sheriff's department, homeless outreach team going out there, and frankly, in regards to my office's pressure on the city of Sacramento in terms of really being compassionate to both the unhoused and the housed and enforcement. And we will continue to preserve our promises and work on that. And what the under sheriff talked about in regards to the RBF facility down in Elk Grove at RCCC is something that I think has great potential, but that's a conversation for another day. But with that, I do want to talk about protecting people, connecting communities, and preserving promises as it relates to this fiscal year that we are about to approach and the criminal justice trends. And I want to focus for a moment here on the fentanyl crisis, the unveiling epidemics toll on America. And specifically, I want to talk about fentanyl death. When we go back to 2014, we look at the rates of deaths regarded to drugs, and below you have the ages to the right, vertically you have the percentage. M stands for methamphetamine, B for barbiturates, R for prescription, C for cocaine, and H for heroin, and F is fentanyl. So when we look back in 2014, we see a smaller band of drug-related deaths as it relates to fentanyl. Now, fast forward to 2021, what we see here is simply alarming. We see the increase in fentanyl deaths. And if you look specifically on the horizontal axis, the ages of 15, 17, 19, and 21Cs, they have suffered the greatest increase in fentanyl death. This is simply alarming when you see that. Fentanyl deaths have simply skyrocketed. Now, why is that? Well, in 2022, the Sacramento District Attorney Crab Lab tested over 17,000 grams of fentanyl in addition to 200,000 pills. And I have here a little sugar packet, and a sugar packet contains approximately a gram of sugar. But if a gram of fentanyl can kill 500 people, that is absolutely alarming. Last year in the state of California, law enforcement seized enough fentanyl to kill every single person on the face of the earth. That's how much fentanyl we have in the state of California. And over the last several years, my office has been part of the "one pill can kill" campaign. We've reached over 100,000 people, including students. And we are still engaging in that sort of educational program, but it's not enough. What does fentanyl look like in Sacramento? We see the rainbow pills, we see it in different forms, we see it in the M30 counterfeit pills. And frankly, fentanyl right now is being laced in marijuana, in vape pens, in meth. It's everywhere. It's a cutting agent. And why is that? Because fentanyl is 50 times more addictive than heroin, 50 times. The high that you get from fentanyl is extremely high, and you immediately drop from it. And so the fentanyl creates a more addictive clientele. That is what the drug dealers are doing at a cheaper rate, but it kills people. Because what does it look like in Sacramento? So let's talk about the fentanyl poisoning deaths in Sacramento. On the left, you see from 2019, we had 33 fentanyl-related deaths. In 2020, 108. 2021, 215. In 2022, 229. And then it jumps up in 2023, 401 people died from fentanyl-related poisoning. And right now, in 2024, we are projected to meet, if not surpass, that number. And I can tell you right now, even the 2023 numbers, we're not sure if that's an actual completed numbers, because they're still going through the corner to evaluate those deaths. It could be even higher. So what does fentanyl look like in Sacramento? You look here, in 2022, the gun-related homicides are 86. That's how many we had. On the other hand, fentanyl-related homicides in Sacramento County, 229. Fentanyl is simply killing more people than guns. And in 2023, we have 53 related homicide cases with guns and 401 with fentanyl. The numbers are increasing. Fentanyl is killing more people than guns. And what does it look like in Sacramento? Over 1,100 people have died from fentanyl deaths since 2019. 1,100 people, 1,100 victims, 1,100 men, women, and children. 1,100 families have been affected by fentanyl. That is what we are dealing, and we are at the tip, or only at the tip of the iceberg, because typically, drug trends in California follow the drug trends on the East Coast. So what we are seeing now are the drug trends on the East Coast back from 2018. So there is a rising tide when it comes to this. And so what are we doing? There are a couple of things that we are doing. And I will start with this. At the end of the last administration, due to staffing issues, the district attorney's office no longer had a major narcotic unit. When I came into office in 2023, I restarted the major narcotic unit. And that is something that is, that I will talk about here, that is extremely important to deal with this. So I started, within the last month, the Sacramento FORCE Team. ENFORCE stands for Fentanyl Overdose Resolution and Criminal Investigation Enforcement. It's, I mean, there's a lot of words there. But what it does is, we have a partnership with our federal prosecutors and investigations. We have the U.S. Attorney's Office, DEA Task Force Supervisor, and a 14-person multi-agency team. And here locally, what I've done is, we have started a state prosecution and investigation lead. We have, I have assigned a former homicide prosecutor, Leland Washington, who is now the supervisor of the major narcotics unit. It's a unit with one prosecutor, because that's what we can do right now. We also assigned an investigator, Brandon Olivera, who is well-versed in narcotics. We are also putting together a regional task force, team comprised of local law enforcement agencies. And what are we doing? So, for example, first responders and patrol officers would be dispatched, or obviously, to potential overdose investigations. They will preserve the scene as if it was a homicide and treat it as if it was a homicide. They'll identify potential witnesses by photo identification. They will attempt to keep those witnesses on scene until a FORCE team member arrives. They will confirm if other potential witnesses are left at the scene prior to law enforcement arrival. They will collect evidence, such as phones. Cell phones are a key crucial piece of this. They will also ask the witnesses and the family not to post about the death on social media, because we don't want the fentanyl drug dealers knowing that somebody had passed as we are beginning the investigation. In addition, we're creating a multi-agency collaborative partnership and approach to both fatal and non-fatal OD investigation. We're creating a checklist protocol to guide law enforcement regarding investigations, improve the investigative response time to the fatal ODs, so that within the first 24 hours, we are ensuring that the evidence is preserved and collected. Provide local agencies with investigative support, resources, guidance for both fatal and non-fatal investigations. We'll also provide the patrol officers and first responder with a QR code, so that if they take that QR code, they scan it on their phone, immediately, they will be connected to a protocol checklist of the things that they need to do, and be provided with a phone number to contact a 24-hour roster of task force members that will be able to respond to the scene and give advice on how to investigate these cases. We'll facilitate regular meetings among the task force members in terms of disseminating the evidence, discussion, feedback, and trends and intel. We'll facilitate the fentanyl investigation training for all these agencies, and finally, the prosecution of dealers for murders. And I want to talk about that for a moment. Prior to taking office last year, the Sacramento District Attorney's Office had never once prosecuted a single individual who was selling fentanyl that resulted in the death of someone for murder. Since that time, in the last year and a half, my office is currently prosecuting five individuals for murder related to selling fentanyl. So this is part of the process. But as you can tell, it requires a tremendous amount of resources. The narcotics unit is investigating and prosecuting dealers as it relates to methamphetamine, heroin, dealing with different task force. So essentially, what I am requesting is the establishment and the approval of an additional attorney in order to deal with our fentanyl crisis. So these are one of the trends that I'm talking about in our justice system. Another area that I would like to address now deals with sexual violence to children. In the old days, when I used to prosecute sex crimes, and I did it for many years, there was a system in which law enforcement, first responders, nurses, teachers, et cetera, would report sexual violence or sexual abuse towards children. And the way they would do it is fill out this triplicate form, and then that form would go out. And frankly, it would sit on the shelf for a long time. And this is what it looks like, right here, just a stack of forms sitting in multiple, whether CPS, law enforcement, any other location. So last year, we came on board with the ESCAR program, which is the Electronic Suspected Child Abuse Report System. And what it does is, a mandatory reporter, a teacher, a counselor, a nurse, would fill out this form electronically and immediately, without sitting on a shelf somewhere, it would go to law enforcement, it would go to CPS, and would go to the DA's office. Immediately, we would have access to it. And so on this particular screenshot, from February 28th of 2024 to May 28th of 2024, that's a 90-day period, we received 3,507 submitted ESCAR reports. I can tell you that previously, nobody kept track of how many would receive, but this is an unprecedented amount of reports. And so what does that mean? Well, more investigation frankly leads to more cases. And so if you look back in 2015, you know, we had about 264 cases that we would file, and now we are projected to be filing 521 cases this year, and last year, 415 cases when ESCARs came online. We are simply prosecuting more cases, which is the right thing to do, because we are investigating these cases, we are filing them, and we are taking these child predators off the streets. But what does that mean? That means increased caseloads. And so if you look at it back in 2015, the average caseload of a child prosecutor, a prosecutor in our sexual assault, child abuse unit, was about 15. And if you look at the trend of it, we expect that, you know, at the current rate, to be somewhere around, you know, in the 20s. But frankly, with ESCARs and everything else that is going on, in 2024, as you move to the right of this chart, you see that we have peaked at 45 cases per caseload and on average, 30. So the caseload has nearly doubled, if not tripled, in some cases. And I can tell you as a, as someone who has personally prosecuted child molesters and sex offense cases, you know, I prosecuted homicide cases and gang cases, but there's no more greater impact that you have than as a prosecutor prosecuting these cases. These children oftentimes are family members or witnesses, so we spend, as prosecutors, a tremendous amount of time listening to the child, talking to the child, working with the child to get them ready for court. And then when we walk them into court, since their family members are often witnesses, they walk into court alone. Alone, they sit on that witness stand. Alone, they sit there, and the one person that did the most embarrassing, humiliating, horrific thing to them in their life is sitting only a few feet away from them. Frankly, these cases take a tremendous toll on the prosecutor. Frankly, these cases take a tremendous toll on the prosecutor, physically, mentally, emotionally. And I know that having prosecuted these cases myself. And so when we look at caseloads doubling and at times tripling, it is simply crushing. And so what I am respectfully asking is that we are asked to do more with less. And so I am respectfully requesting an approval of one additional attorney that will be assigned to this unit. In addition to what we've been talking so far about personnel, I would like to talk about property for a moment. And specifically, talking about the location of my office. So for the last 50 years, the Sacramento District Attorney's Office has been located at 901 G Street. In the 1970s, the population of Sacramento County was 600,000. Today, it's 1.6 million. Back in the 1970s, we had less than 100 DA employees. Today, we have 400-plus employees and interns working in the downtown core area. In the 1970s, we had one building. Today, we work out of three different buildings, totaling about 107,000 square feet. Now, within the next two years, we expect that we will lose our lease to one of the private property owners that we lease from. And we are expecting to lose about 30% of our office space. Right now, we are bursting at the seams in terms of the work that we have to do. And in the next two years, we expect to lose additional 31,000 square feet because we are in the county building at 901 and the two other buildings, we are leasing from private entities. And over the last several years, but in particular, in the last year and a half, my office has worked diligently. And I really want to thank the CEO, David Villanueva, Eric Jones, and the Department of Real Estate from the county. We've identified an actual new building in which we can consolidate the 400-plus employees into one building downtown. We've identified that building and there are benefits at relocation. The first is net savings for the county. In terms of net savings for the county, we expect that the new location, we expect that the new location actually will save the county money because it's going to be a net reduction in square feet resulting in consolidation of facilities. We believe that we will more efficiently use space, more offices, but fewer lobbies and conference rooms. And as such, we will actually be saving the county in the first five years, increased amounts of money in terms of what it costs to consolidate in these three buildings. We'll have increased operational efficiencies, improve internal communication. And I'll give one example of the improved communication. So right now, my central operation, the felony teams, the misdemeanor teams, they are located at 901 G Street. But our collaborative courts team, the team that handles veterans court, reset court, DUI court, drug court, because that team has increased in size due to the May's consent decree and also because I'm trying to find ways to divert people from our criminal justice system, that has expanded. We don't have space for them at 901 G Street. So I've had to move them into another location, even though they deal with the same cases hand in hand with the rest of our central operations. Being in one building will allow more efficiency in terms of internal communication. It will also allow the county to alternatively use, lease, or sell 901 G Street to other court functions, et cetera. So we believe that this is going to be beneficial for everyone involved. And I want to finally end again in expressing my great appreciation. I know that the board has always been very pro-public safety in terms of everything that you try to do, but also balance the fair administration of justice to all communities. And again, I would like to thank the county and their staff for everything that they've done this year in terms of the challenges with the budget. But with that, I'd be open for any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Mr. District Attorney. I have one question on the relocation project. What is your timeline for wanting to see something like that happen?
Within the next year. And we have been in discussions with Department of Real Estate, with the CEO's office. And I think that that is all with, very feasible to do within the next year here.
So when is the lease up over at the Kaiser Building?
That building will be done in 2026. Well, that lease terminates in 2026. And frankly, the landlord there has been in discussions with Kaiser to expand that. And frankly, Kaiser is going to pay a lot more money than we are. But obviously, we would have to get ready to find another facility, to then move those people because they simply can't fit in our current capacity. That's 30% of our office. So that's why we believe that within the next year here, this could happen.
Okay, thank you. Supervisor Desmond.
Thank you, District Attorney Ho. Thank you for being here in the presentation and appreciate the questions about the facility. I think it's great to be sitting on a marker for that now. With the, with the fentanyl, do you track the non-fatal overdoses? Because I know there's such a highlight on the fatal ones. And we've had discussions about that here in the chamber. Do we do a good job really quantifying those?
You know, frankly, the answer is no. And here's why. With the fatal ODs, the coroner keeps it and we can track it. But sometimes with the other overdoses, the non-fatal, the first responders, fire, ambulance, whatever, they're going out there. And unless it gets reported, law enforcement shows up and unless we file some sort of case, it's really not going to show up in terms of the data. And frankly, my office usually gets involved when there's a, you know, a crime that we can charge somebody with. But obviously, with an overdose, you know, somebody is using, we don't charge that individual. And so we really don't have good data on that.
Okay. And the reason I ask is I think we may be missing out on the true magnitude of this crisis if we don't somehow have a sense of all the non-fatal overdoses as a result of fentanyl. So and then in terms of the positions, you know, I know it's a real challenge this year because that's an ongoing expenditure, ongoing cost. And I mean, I'm glad you raised that issue. What, how many vacancies do you currently have? Prosecutor vacancies?
I believe we have a vacancy of somewhere, you know, close to about 10. We had three retirements recently. Well, excuse me, two retirements. Let me clarify that. One of our attorneys passed away recently. And so, you know, God rest his soul, he was head of our collaborative courts and did a fantastic job. So we have three openings as a result of those situations.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Supervisor Frost.
Thank you, DA Ho, for all that you've done in so many ways. You're a great DA. And I've really appreciated your proactive approach to fentanyl. And I wanted to ask you just a quick question. I know you're working with the legislature to create a paper path to help build cases. And you mentioned in your talk that you're now treating each case as a homicide. And I know that in the past, it's been a problem because a lot of the cases, there's no connection to, you know, I guess questionable things that might cause someone to believe it was a homicide. They went into their room and they just didn't come out. No one knows what happened. So it goes down on the night of, I guess, the investigation or when the first responders get there, it goes down as an accidental death or suicide. And so in that case, are you saying that every fentanyl death is now treated as a potential homicide? Or if not, can you go back and change it? Because in the past, we've had cases where if it didn't go down as a homicide, it's never going to go back and be investigated as a homicide. It's already on the record. Can you speak to that?
Yes, Supervisor Frost, that's a great question. So two things. First of all, we, the first responders, as we go through the training, they'll go through a screening process because they're boots on the ground. They can figure out, is this an OD case? Is this where we can perhaps preserve some evidence and go after the drug dealer? So that's an initial screening process, the QR code. Having one of our team members respond. And, you know, in the last two weeks, we've actually had our investigator at the DA's office, who I assigned to this unit, actually respond to, I believe, three different scenes. But what we are also doing and why we call it resolution rather than response team, that R is because we are actually going back and looking at other cases where perhaps it happened a year ago and somebody overdosed, somebody poisoned on, was poisoned on fentanyl. We're going back to see if there's evidence there to go after the drug dealer. So we're looking at old cases, what we call cold cases on that. So we're looking at two right now because people who've lost their family members deserve justice. And we need to go after these drug dealers because that holds them accountable and it saves lives as well. But these cases are incredibly time-consuming. And it's not just a matter of hiring because if I hire, and we're in the process, you know, to Supervisor Desmond, those 10 spots, we anticipate to be filling them up, you know, relatively soon. We're doing interviews. We have another group of young attorneys that are coming on in two months. So it's not just filling those spots, but it's also adding on to it because these cases are so time-consuming as well.
Thank you.
Supervisor Hume.
Well, first off, I just want to say thank you for a very compelling series of slides and cases. And I'm just glad I've never had to face off against you when I'm trying to sway a jury. We'll see how your requests shake out when it comes time for deliberations. But I just wanted to thank you for kind of taking what your predecessor started, which was referring to fentanyl as poisoning, not overdose. Because overdose is when somebody imbibes too much of something they intended to take. And I think what happens too often with fentanyl, A, they never intended to take it or they never intended to take it in the quantities that are present in whatever they took. So thank you for that. And then, you know, I agree with the idea of holding accountable the dealers and the folks that are distributing this poison. Could it be taken to the next level? And if somebody is caught with an amount intended to distribute, that they could be held accountable for like attempted homicide or something that would ratchet it up to show that they are something more than just a dealer?
So the attempt is a little bit more difficult to prove under the law, especially the way it's written. And frankly, some of the drug laws that I'm trying to change right now deals with fentanyl in terms of increase in the penalty. Because here's the deal. A kilo of cocaine, a pound of cocaine is different than, you know, it takes much less fentanyl. So we need to up the penalties for those that have smaller amounts of fentanyl that can kill more people. And I'm talking, you know, you know, half, you know, a pound of fentanyl can kill so many more people. So we're working on some of those legislation in the Capitol on it. And that's part of why I wanted to restart our major narcotic unit and have that attorney be on multiple different task force so that we can interdicate and go after the dealers, go upstream on it. But this is going to require a lot of work because there's enough fentanyl in the state of California to kill every person on the face of the earth and then some. That's just how much they seized last year. It doesn't even account for how much is there. And it's now being filtered in with vape pens, with marijuana, with methamphetamine. So it is a crisis that has wrecked havoc on communities and families.
Well, thank you for that. And again, we'll see how the discussion goes. But I do know that in talking with you, and I've confirmed it with our county exec, that it appears that there's a way to make this office consolidation cost-neutral or even maybe of a slight benefit cost savings. So I'm certainly in favor of exploring that further. Thank you.
Thank you. I believe that's all the questions we have. Thank you, Mr. District Attorney.
Always great to see everyone. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so through the chair, over here, sorry. Deputy County Executive Eric Jones, Public Safety and Justice. Based on the discussion so far and to speak about system-wide justice impacts, I believe Amanda Benson may have some additional comments if the chair is okay with that.
The chair is always okay with having our public defender here.
Thank you. Good morning, almost good afternoon. Thank you for allowing me to be heard, Mr. Chair and members of the board. I'm Amanda Benson, the Chief Public Defender. I also want to thank, I think, want to thank all of you for listening to us today. But also, I want to thank the county executive and his team for supporting our office, valuing the work we do, and supporting some of our highest priority budget requests. I'm here this morning first to support our district attorney's request for a new building or a new facility for his department. My understanding is that if his department were to move into a new facility, that there would be an option for the public defender's office to move into his current building. That would be a win-win situation for both of our offices. It would allow our office to consolidate our adult division into one building and allow us to provide our services more efficiently and effectively. It would also allow our clients to more easily access our office by entering directly from, excuse me, from the sidewalk or the street rather than navigating the county administration building. So we are very much in support of that request by the district attorney. I'm also here this morning to make a second request. And that is that if this board approves additional funding for additional prosecution for the district attorney through additional attorneys, that this board similarly approve funding for our office to provide the constitutionally mandated services that would be required to represent people that are prosecuted. As this board is well aware, the public defender services are constitutionally mandated. Both the U.S. and state constitutions require that anyone charged with a crime is entitled to effective assistance of counsel, which typically means our office because many people can't afford to hire an attorney on their own. Effective assistance of counsel means professionally competent legal representation. And when we fail to provide this, it causes harm to our clients, to the community who loses faith in the criminal justice system, and also causes, risks additional liability to our office and the county. And it causes additional delays and prolonged pretrial incarceration. The public defender cannot provide professionally competent representation if we have too many cases. Unlike prosecutors, public defender attorneys are mandated and have an ethical duty under the American Bar Association Rules of Professional Responsibility to ensure that their caseloads are at a level where they can provide diligent and competent representation. As the chief public defender, I have a duty to ensure that our caseloads are manageable and that we have the resources we need to ensure that they are manageable. Because of your support over the past couple of years, we've been able to increase our staff so that our caseloads are manageable. And we are very, very grateful for that. But the new and expanded mental health diversion law has really stretched our limits. As you know, this law is new and it was recently expanded. So almost half of our cases now are eligible for mental health diversion. Cases that previously resolved within months are now on our caseloads for up to year, multiple years. Attorneys must now thoroughly investigate our clients' mental health histories. They must work closely with behavioral health to create individualized treatment plans. And then they must draft and create and then they must draft and create and submit these complicated mental health diversion applications. Oftentimes, these applications are delayed because the district attorney or the judge want our attorneys to do additional workup and gather more information or have our clients go through additional assessments. And then, once the application is granted, the attorney is required to continue representing that client throughout the remainder of the program, which can take up to two years. To handle this increased workload, we have had to pull attorneys from other areas in our office, and we've had to try to find other efficiencies within our office to handle this new workload. These attorneys are now working diligently to reduce the backlog of cases in which many of our clients sit in jail waiting for their application to be heard. To ensure that we can keep our caseloads manageable and continue working on the backlog of mental health diversion cases, we respectfully request that if you approve additional funding for the district attorney to prosecute more cases, that you would also approve additional funding for our office to provide the constitutionally mandated representation that we are required to provide. I want to end by thanking you again for all of your support over the last few years. We've, we really appreciate the effort to make our budget whole and bring our caseloads to a manageable level. I also again want to thank our county executive and his team for all that they've done to support our office. Thank you.
Thank you, Amanda. Appreciate it. Any questions from the board? Sue Rother Desmond.
Thank you, Amanda. And thank you again for coming to the Student Voices event that we had.
Yes, that was fun. Thank you.
If, so how does the conflict panel play into this discussion? I mean, because I certainly understand you and agree, you know, with everything you're saying and have the same concerns. If we decide to do something for the DA's office, obviously there has to be a counter resource for the defense of those cases.
We are very grateful for the conflict criminal defender. They've been, they, if we have to overload on cases, they have been very willing and to help us with that, but their budget is limited too, and they have mental health diversion cases. They have all the same obligations with their caseload, and about half of their cases also require mental health diversion applications. So if we had to overload, we definitely would because I'm committed to keeping our caseloads manageable, but it would also incur a cost to them to then have those additional cases.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else, Mr. Jones?
No, Chair, thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, then with that, we will go to public comment on the budget.
Okay. Our first speaker is David Baker.
And so the board is aware, after this, we will take a five-minute break.
Well, thank you to the board and thank you, Chair Kennedy, and I'll try to get you on your break on time. I'm David Baker, the CEO of the Sacramento Children's Home. I want to voice my support for the growth request for the court-mandated parent workshops. We operate a lot of programs in the county, and some of the most important ones are our Family Resource Centers, which are part of the Birth and Beyond Collaborative. And as you know, those cases have, those, we're doing about 800 of those with families that have court-ordered workshops, and those have been paid the last few years by First Five, I think going back probably to 2008. Phil Cerner will know better than many of us about how First Five's funding for that was picked up when the county didn't have funding for that. Well, First Five's funding has gone down, and it's time for the county to take that responsibility back. This is a $1.3 million, we're really saving money for the county in terms of reducing abuse and neglect and keeping kids in their home and making sure that reunification's happening. And the Birth and Beyond classes also connect folks to a lot of other services that really do have a tremendous effect on reducing childhood abuse and neglect reports and also in keeping families together, which is really our ultimate goal. So I hope we can have your support for that, and thank you very much.
Thank you. And Amanda, to be clear, that is in the recommended budget.
Yes, it is.
Thank you. Martin Bryant?
So my name is Martin Bryant. So I work in the Plan Review Department for Buildings, Permits, Inspection Division. So I actually just work right across the hallway over there. I'm also the relatively newly elected president of ETTI, which is a union bargaining unit for several hundred county employees. The reason I'm here today is just to, is to advocate for the utilization of something that already exists within the county, but it just doesn't seem to be taken advantage of, and that's limited-term employment. So from what I understand with this upcoming budget, there are measures being taken to prepare for potential reduction in projects within the county over the next year, specifically with BPID and CMID having their budgets very slightly but reduced, and instead kind of relying upon third-party contractors to fill the void as needed, which is kind of a, I guess, a standard operating procedure, you know. So a better solution to the issues that face the county may be the use of that limited term employment. So the advantages of limited-term employment over third-party consultants, there's quite a few of them. First, it provides better control over the work process and quality. Employees are more integrated into the culture and understand the county's specific needs and goals, leading to a more aligned and dedicated effort. Second, it fosters stronger team cohesion. Limited-term employees can build better relationships with the existing staff, promoting collaboration, smoother workflow compared to external consultants who may remain detached from the core team. Third, the cost-effectiveness, which is obviously a big deal. Consultants often charge premium rates. Limited-term employees can be more cost-efficient, especially when considering the long-term benefits of their deeper organizational integration.
Can you wrap up there, Sue?
Yeah, I'm sorry. So lastly, long-term employment allows for easier knowledge transfer and retention. Employees who work closely within the county can better document, share their insight and skills. And then lastly, there's an obvious path to retention of long-term employment if their skills are kind of needed and missing within the other county employees or divisions. So that's it. I just wanted to, you know, advocate for the use of that as opposed to the, you know, guy continued crutch of.
Thank you, Mr. Bryant. Appreciate it.
All right. Thank you for your time.
Keon Bliss?
So I think we've made it very clear as a community that our county's budget should be a reflection of our values, and we urge you to continue, this board, to really, given the difficult budget environment, prioritize spending in community-based life-affirming services over further expanding of incarceration and law enforcement institutions. I want to note that the board rightfully paused and sought further review on the $1 billion proposal for the main jail new intake and health services facility. However, the proposed five-year capital plan continues to allocate too much to jails, over $720 million for the main jail and Rio Cosumes Correctional Center over the next five years, which is over 80% of building and capital construction for the entire county. And that's, if you put that in perspective, we don't put nearly that much into our county libraries, which currently are looking to get about $14 million or other critical social services. So I'd like to ask that you deny this year's $4 million for the main jail expansion, which is on hold and may not even move forward, and just put a pin on that, just to finally put that to an end, given your past votes. We also, I also want to point out that AB 109 funds meant for alternatives to incarceration are primarily being used for law enforcement, 89% as of this year. And a recent report showed that 89% of Sacramento County's AB 109 funds was dedicated to law enforcement compared to as low as 41% in counties like Contra Costa County and other counties that dedicate more funding to community-based health, treatment, and housing services. As a reliable source of ongoing funding from the state, AB 109 could provide a critical and stable source of funding to support people thriving in communities rather than languishing in jails and jails pretrial, which our pretrial population continues to be over 80%. So to summarize, would request that you deny funding for the main jail expansion, deny funding increases for law enforcement, support funding for public defenders, 2.1 million, and conflict defenders, especially for 1.7 million, and reallocate AB 109 funds to prioritize community-based programs and reduce jail population.
Thank you. Marshall Arnwein?
My name is Marshall Arnwein. I'm the legal policy advocate for the ACLU Northern California Criminal Justice Program. Today, we are coming to request that you fund a community-based organization named NorCal Resist. We are asking that you direct the county to see if there's funding available because this community organization will provide an increase in safe drivers on the road and help reduce non-safety-related traffic stops, such as having an invalid registration. We recommend NorCal Resist, but we're open for the county to conduct a county-wide search to see who's best suited for this program. NorCal Resist has a proven track record of results. So far in 2024, they fixed over 110 brake and signal bulbs in over 60 headlights. Since 2018, they have serviced over 600 cars, all for free. Just imagine, with county funding, NorCal Resist could serve more residents, and it would help reduce racial disparities in traffic stops and alleviate harms community members experience when they get pulled over, all without compromising community safety. Why is this important and why is this funded needed this year? The ACLU co-authored a report called "Reimagining Community Safety," and the report shows that there's data collected from state law, Racial and Identity Profiling Act, that when the Sacramento Sheriff Department conduct officer-initiated traffic stops, a large proportion of them were non-safety-related, such as an invalid registration. Additionally, the data shows that in 2019, black people were disproportionately stopped in comparison to other racial groups, in comparison to each racial group's population rate. In closing, I will leave you with NorCal Resist budget proposal I have here as a two-year pilot program that itemizes what they need to upscale their program, and I also will leave you with the ACLU's co-authored report that breaks down the data of how I arrived at this conclusion that this community-based organization is needed. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Marshall. And again, I will remind you of the fantastic lecture we got from Amanda on how the budget process works. So, you know, we will be back in September when we'll have a better view of what the budget actually looks like, so. Erin Sebary, I don't see her.
She was here.
She was here? Okay. We'll hold in case she's outside. Sergey Geryev?
Well, good afternoon. For the record, I think it's my poor handwriting. It should be Sergey Terebkov, but I'm the one with Sergey.
I would have pronounced it wrong anyway.
So, good afternoon, dear Chair Kennedy and honorable board members. I'd like to start with thanking you for your leadership and for your decision to approve a budget for services for Ukrainian refugees. And as you guys know, we're experiencing the biggest crisis since World War II with refugees coming. State of California received about 40,000, and we have way over 10,000 that settle here in Sacramento County. Because of your decision and great partnership with Department of Human Assistance, we're able to serve over 300 families with vital services such as housing, food, you know, getting them to DMV, getting their employment authorization, getting their children into school with enrollment, getting them to ESL classes, so basically kind of situating them and helping them to move along on the way to their self-sufficiency. So our current contract that we had approved by you guys back in February of 2023 is ending on June 30th. So my ask is respectfully, if you could consider to extend this, because we have hundreds of individuals that we're currently helping right now, so we're going to have to stop on June 30th. Obviously, we're seeking for some other resources, how we can help them, but as far as our direct services, we're going to have to stop doing that. So we have approximately 200 cases that we're working with currently. And then there's people coming over, they're continuing to come through United for Ukraine program and some other ways settling here in Sacramento. So my ask is respectfully, consider extending the contract or at the minimum, allow us to spend the budget that we were initially approved for, which is, I believe, 929,000. So we should have remaining balance of, again, this is a very rough number, approximately 400 or 450. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Sergey. Carlos Montes Ponce.
Thank you very much for this opportunity to speak. My name is Carlos Montes Ponce. I'm with the ACLU of Northern California, also with some of our local community partners, we Community Care First Coalition. One of the main, you know, I want to reiterate our support for the points mentioned by Marshall and Keon as well, but on one of the budget growth requests, we did want to ask, you know, collectively as a coalition, to not support or to not support the growth request for the purchase of the mobile command vehicle to support the management of incidents and planned events by providing interior and/or exterior workspaces and command and control capabilities to the incidents commanding on scene and our remote locations, but rather that we look at this particular item for a possible alternative of funding for like community partners in the area that are doing work, such as what was recommended similarly by Marshall, you know, individual groups who are doing other items to prevent, you know, the interaction with law enforcement. So we do ask that some of that particular item be revised in order to see maybe where we can utilize the money for our community partners in the local area. Thank you.
Thank you, Carlos.
Yes?
Oh, I said thank you.
Okay.
That concludes your public comments.
Okay, that concludes public comment. We will take a five-minute break, and then when we come back, the board can deliberate and ask questions of staff. And then the plan is to, should there be a need, which there always is, to break and allow staff whatever time they need to come back to the board and explain what the ramifications would be and all of that. Okay? Oh, Erin.
Yes.
Okay. Before we take, I did not hit the gavel yet, so.
Oh, wait, was she not on there?
We'll have one more public speaker.
I apologize that I just called her. Am I standing between you and lunch? I'll be quick.
No, not yet.
Not yet.
No lunch today.
Erin Sebary, Chair of the Sacramento County Commission on the Status of Women and Girls, here representing the commission. We have submitted a letter on the county budget. This is our first year. We're proud to be in our advisorial capacity to you. So, Mr. Chair, Mr. Vice Chair, and members of the esteemed board, we would like to submit this letter and ask you to, I know you all do a lot of great work considering the most vulnerable of our populations, and I've just sat here hearing some of the many contending issues. So I'm very aware that from public safety and security to housing, you have a lot on your plate. Our letter just really focuses on some of the issues around children, families, and women. I wanted to just mention that from APS to CPS, we're concerned about some of the cuts that you're having to take in staffing to provide services. IHSS, as we heard from this morning, we're really glad about that FTE, but we also understand that training for IHSS workers impacts, you know, women, everyone, but women especially, who are very vulnerable, need that kind of training at home, and that's the front lines between them. And sometimes, as you know, there are a high number of growing homelessness, and sometimes that IHSS training. So I know that in years coming, when the state money goes away from career pathways, we want to see more training supports, maybe not this year, but in the years to come. And so I'll just close my comments with saying that you can look at the letter. We are in alliance with the Children's Coalition, and there's some of their asks. We've been working closely with them to look at the budget, and we just ask that you consider kind of particularly some of these FTEs if you can, when you look at all of the competing demands. Thank you.
Thank you, Erin. Supervisor Cerner?
Real quick, question for Siobhan. This, the concern about, that has just been expressed about FTEs evaporating, is there some confusion about vacancies?
So it is vacancies that are being reduced in the budget. And as Amanda presented earlier, as we get more funding opportunities and as we get vacancies through attrition, the departments will be able to sort of reshuffle to be able to fund their most critical positions.
Right, but, thank you. So assuming we would move forward with the CEO's recommendation, there would be no material effect to human resources, as has been cited here in terms of the concern.
Correct. No layoffs of people, just vacancies deleted.
Yes, sorry if I misspoke about that. And I know that.
Just wanted to be clear.
Yeah, thank you for that clarification.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Appreciate you being here. Okay, we'll take a five-minute break. Calls meeting back to order with the clerk. Please call the roll.
Yes, Supervisor Cerner.
Here.
Desmond Frost.
Here.
Hume.
Here.
Kennedy.
Here.
And you have Korn.
Thank you. All right. No one's punching in. And you have any final words to say, Mr. Villanueva, before we jump in?
No, I appreciate, I didn't have a chance to thank the DA, but that's another great relationship that we have, and we. relationship that we have, and we work very closely, and we are supportive of the facility move, given that it's cost-neutral, and I think there's some other opportunities for him to have some floor plan savings on there that we should, we'll talk about, but nothing more to add.
Okay, so, since you brought that up, and because I'm sure there's others who want to talk about that too, and we have supervisors punched in, we really don't have enough information at this point to really do, take any action on that.
That's correct.
Right.
That's correct.
So, anything that we would entertain would be after this.
That's correct.
Yeah.
And it may not, while the move and such may not happen, I don't know that we may not be hit by the fiscal side until next fiscal year.
That's what I'm saying, yeah.
And, but the lease may come this year.
So, right. So, you can, you can, you know, between, you know, now and when we have to, you can work with the DA to put together a more, you know, a, not more, because there's one, but a detailed timeline and budget and all of that.
Absolutely, and I think the district attorney, Ho, was referring to when an action might be coming to the board, meaning the lease.
Right.
His actual move is, I think it takes nine to 12 months for tenant improvements, so it's going to be quite some time.
And I just want, I just bring it up at the offset, because I think there is support up here. I could, if I could read body language for this, but I think it's premature to really have a long discussion about it today.
It is premature, and the other thing we still need to work on is what happens to, what do we do with that empty building?
Right.
And I know Public Defender mentioned that there could be an opportunity for her to move in, or her group to move into there, which would be a great opportunity. There's, but then what do we do with that domino when that falls down here in the basement of this building? There's a whole host of opportunities for us to look at, and Dr. Fidel is putting out a contract now to bring in somebody to do a facility study and space study to figure out what should we do for those spaces, and all that'll come together as we bring it back to the board.
Great, thank you. All right, Supervisor Serna.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, I'd like to start, as I suspect my colleagues will do likewise, by thanking our staff, starting with our county CEO and our chief fiscal officer, Amanda Thomas. I think they've put forth a very responsible, recommended budget, and the time that they've taken to brief us all, I think was well-spent in terms of getting the, not just the high altitude understanding of what is a very, probably the most complicated local government budget we have around this region, but to really kind of help us synthesize for ourselves and distill what it all means in terms of the projected longer economic environment. I think that's important for us to always keep at front of mind when we're making deliberations about even some of the smallest growth requests. So, again, I think it's been a very good process this year, leading up to this point, and keep up the great work. I do have some comments and suggestions about the budget, and they're not large item issues, one of which I've already mentioned, which is simply to have us look at how we documented our commitment, three-year commitment in this budget moving forward for all the great work that DCFAS and First Five probation, DHA do in partnership as it relates to addressing the disparity, ongoing disparity in African-American child deaths. That's not incidental. We've, this board has made that commitment since 2015, and it's measured in the tens of millions of dollars. And I certainly want to thank my past and present colleagues for their strong support of what I think is a very successful and intentional program to, I think, responsibly address one of our most pressing matters in Sacramento County. And I did have an opportunity during the bio break to speak with our county council. I mentioned to her that my intention is simply to have us more or less memorialize that commitment the same way we did three years ago, and if I heard her correctly, it would be just in the resolution that we would adopt that adjoins the approval of the budget. So, that's one slight adjustment that I would promote. And then the second, and as I mentioned I would when we heard from Mr. Alt representing the downtown Sacramento partnership earlier, the safety of our employees, the safety of people downtown should concern us all. And I've even had, on occasion, I've had the experience of feeling a bit threatened myself, just being downtown and having to kind of navigate through some kind of stressful parts of the environment here. And I know it's not getting much better, and it really does, it really is disheartening to hear more frequently that we have employees of this building and other parts of our county complex here in downtown Sacramento that are experiencing that unfortunately. As Mr. Alt alluded to, we did have a homicide just earlier this week within hundreds of feet from where we sit here, and that is unacceptable. I agree with him completely. I believe we do have a responsibility to partner with the city of Sacramento and make at least a similar commitment in terms of resource availability to help address security. I had the opportunity to speak, as I mentioned, with Howard Chan, the city manager, last evening, and Michael Alt, and then with our county CEO yesterday afternoon and this morning to come up with, I think, is a kind of a creative way to find those resources and not have to break the budget to do so. And I will just kind of leave it that I think there's a combination of perhaps some ARPA funds that might be clawed back, and also some TOT revenue that we can look at to help match the city's commitment of a quarter million dollars for safety, security, and cleanliness in the downtown area. I know that the county CEO, in his contract, in his contract authority, can kind of handle that administratively, and he's assured me that he will do so, and I feel strongly that he's going to stand by his word, and certainly I'll work closely with his office as conversations should and will take place, should it be the will of the board to support this, working with Michael Alt and his operation. And so, that would be the other ask is simply general support from my colleagues, that we leave it to the county exec to kind of tap into that creative match of funds to make that happen. And then I do want to say that if, again, this board is going to respond affirmatively to the DA and in his personnel requests, that I think our Public Defender makes a very good point, that I think parity is in order in terms of the constitutional responsibilities that her office has for public defense. And, you know, I heard the collective gasp when the fentanyl death chart was presented, and I would note too that methamphetamine was kind of off the charts as well, so it's not just, not just fentanyl. And I believe he was looking for some resources, not just as it relates to fentanyl, but I think all narcotics, as they trend in the wrong direction unfortunately with regards to local overdoses. So, Mr. Chair, that I think concludes everything I wanted to say. I will, I will end with this. You know, I've had some conversations with another member of this board who I think sees likewise the great work that the Slavic-American Chamber of Commerce has committed to in terms of refugee assistance. And so, while that doesn't really kind of surface all that often in these chambers, I was glad to hear and see Sergey to make mention of it, and I'd be interested to know what others think about that. And I'll leave it there. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chair, may I ask a clarifying question?
I was going to, so you may as well.
On the, on the first item relative to the BCLC, is there a dollar amount associated with that, or it's just a commitment?
It's a commitment moving forward, and the issue is, is because the dollar amount changes year to year slightly, but it is a commitment of three county agencies plus First Five. So, it's DCFAS probation and DHA where those commitments lie, and I'll just give you some examples for programs such as CPS Cultural Broker Program, the CILs, the funding for the Steering Committee, and other programs that are more implemented on the First Five side based on the fact that we have to focus on age zero to five. We can't focus on the larger or the more aged part of the childhood population. So, on average, I will just tell you, so you can get an order of magnitude, the mean or the average that we have committed to over the last three fiscal years is 6.5 million a year for those three agencies, through those three agencies, plus First Five, which is about 5 million just by itself. So, that would be the intent is simply to have on record the commitment for not just this year, which is already in the recommended budget, but for the following two years in general.
Supervisor Serna, just one comment. I know you mentioned my contract authority is up to that quarter of a million dollars.
Yeah.
However, with ARPA funds, that would need to come back.
Of course.
So, that would need to come back probably in July, if we were to use that path of funding.
Right.
And the board would approve that.
Yeah, thank you for that reminder, and I would just hope and assume that if the board were to affirm that direction today, to use that, that funding opportunity, that we would likewise affirm that in the future when it comes back to this body.
Okay, I'll, so you're not asking for a budget decision on that today?
No.
Okay, because I fully support it. You know, I was going to say something to Mr. Alt when he was here, but I didn't want it off-agenda. Yeah, we're one of the largest employers in the downtown.
Yep.
And, you know, we owe it to our employees. Just this morning, I was walking to the press conference for Sacramento Steps Forward, and our security was running, you know, to protect one of our very employees. You know, we had the car fire right underneath my office the other day. I mean, you know, it's a dangerous situation right now that it's not good for our employees, and it's certainly not good for the city or the region, being that Sacramento City is the economic, you know, powerhouse of this region. So, I completely support your efforts there.
One last caveat to that. Should, for whatever reason, we not be able to use funding as has been outlined by the CEO, what I would suggest is kind of a belt and suspenders here is that we look at during the final budget at a general fund commitment to match and provide the security that's necessary. But I understand the sensitivity from the CEO's office not to seek too much in terms of change today to the budget, but I just want to make sure that that's a top priority, and I think you're hearing it quite clearly, Mr. Villanueva, that it's not just a top priority for me, but others as well on this board.
Thank you.
Supervisor Kennedy, thank you for bringing that up. Just so you know, I believe it was yesterday or the day before, we did send out an email to everybody to be more careful. Also, our security folks, again, Dr. Fidel has stepped up and assigned security folks on the perimeter of all our buildings. So, we have all our buildings with at least when folks are traveling. And again, like you, my number one priority is the safety and security of our employees, not only when they're going back and forth to their car or light rail, but also when they're going out to lunch or doing exercises or whatever needs to do for walking and being out there. So, I think this is a good investment also. I hope the rest of the board is nodding yes, and that helps, that's helpful.
I did not mean to insinuate we weren't doing anything. Yeah, I recognize that you are.
There's a different landscape right now, and I think the security's been, may make a difference for the immediate perimeter of our buildings, but I also did talk to Michael Alt last night and this morning, and we're talking about putting together a task force, if you will, to look at the safety and security of not only our employers, our employees here in Sacramento, downtown Sacramento, but what else can we do to help and partner with those things, so.
Great, thank you very much. Supervisor Desmond.
So, thank you. I will also thank staff for everything, for all your hard work, and Amanda, very much appreciate everything you do and your accessibility and your willingness to spend a little extra time on, with those of us who, you know, struggle a little more than others with the budget. Supervisor Hume, but anyway, but starting with Supervisor Serna's first item, yeah, I'm 100% in support of restructuring, so we know we have that certainty with an ongoing support for BCLC. I mean, I agree with Supervisor Hume, Supervisor Serna, that is a program, much to Supervisor Serna's credit, that has made a real tangible difference in people's lives, and we need to make sure that we continue to support it. And then also, 100% in support of coming up with a solution to support the DSP, agree that we have this obligation to employees, but also, you know, when you look at the jail, I mean, it's, this board has made a lot of investments in making sure we get the right supports for people getting discharged from the main jail, but there's also a big negative impact in the surrounding area in terms of people's safety related to that jail. So, I know this, this effort will not only protect our own employees, but protect people in close proximity to that jail in this downtown core. So, really supportive of that, and really applaud Supervisor Serna for already proactively meeting with DSP and some of our city officials about that. So, support both of those. And also, on the, on the DA and the public defenders, I am, our district attorney makes a very compelling case, certainly in terms of the need for an additional, additional resources for fentanyl prosecutions, but I also, I think our public defender makes an equally compelling case. So, I would agree that there should be a one-to-one ratio, and that would, that would probably be the costliest of all of these discussions we're having today. And then the final, last thing I'd like to bring up, and I kind of wrestle with this, Siobhan and I had a conversation, and we heard from Sergey Terekhov from the Slavic-American Chamber. This board made some decisions, I think it was two years ago, two years ago, two or three years ago, to support, provide supports for Afghan refugees, and then it was last year or the year before, I can't remember. I know the Afghan refugee support was the year prior to us making the decision to also provide supports to Ukrainian refugees coming to this region. And I still see all the time in our area, I mean, certainly, you know, in my district, the refugees from both those populations and the profound needs they have in terms of food security, in terms of educational supports, in terms of behavioral health supports. I know the county has contracts with some organizations to provide some of the behavioral supports. I know that there's additional cash assistance available to some of these folks, but I do think that there is still a need for some of these providers to be providing that direct support to some of these newcomers. What I struggle with is, is, you know, we're hearing from the Slavic Chamber, and an easy thing would be just to set aside some money to allow them a little more time to expend some of those funds, or kick it back to staff and say, what I'd like to do is have staff come back to us at September budget, and I'm looking at maybe some, you know, a chart was provided to me, and Siobhan, you can, you can provide a little more information about this, but it looks like there's about two and a half million left from all of the funds that this board approved a couple of years ago, and I'm not, I'm not asking for that, but I'm, what I am inclined to propose is that we set aside maybe $400,000 and then have staff go back and look at which nonprofits that are providing refugee services have been, I guess, most active, most successful, and still have existing clients in the pipeline that they can serve, certainly with an eye towards the Slavic-American Chamber and another organization, RETA, which came under the CARE contract to serve Afghan refugees. I know they are very active with this population and doing incredible work. So, looking at some of the direct providers and maybe coming back in September, giving us your recommendation about how that, that money could be made available to, to help these, these populations. I think it makes sense to provide a little more time for some of these supports, but to also narrow it down to where we're seeing that support being most. to also narrow it down to where we're seeing that support being most effective. Does that make sense, Siobhan, or would you just like to comment?
Yeah, thank you Supervisor Desmond. It does make sense. I just want to lift up and that we haven't spoken with the organizations about continued funding, and so there would be a gap. So contracts will end on June 30th. And so when we come back in September, then we'll have to sort of re-up those, if you will, with those new amounts, not to exceed the 400,000.
But you wouldn't have to start a whole new RFP process or anything, would you? Because that's what I want to avoid.
I believe we can just do extensions and maybe a no-cost extension at this time, but I'll have to work with county DGs to figure out the parameters on that.
Okay.
But we can, we can certainly go back and look at what the outcomes have been for those and the services have been, and then make some recommendations back to the board in September.
Okay. So I'll hold off.
Supervisor Desmond, just a direction to us is to try to, if we could find the $400,000 to make this work, we may be able to make this be resolved by the end of the fiscal year, then we wouldn't have a lapse in the contract. But Siobhan is right, if your direction to us is come back in September, there will be a lapse. So if our direction is to fix this, we'll look at trying to at least deal, if the direction of the board is to fix this, and we might be able to fix it in this fiscal year. If not, we will bring it back in September. If that would be your direction, that would be helpful.
Well, my preference would be if we can fix it in this fiscal year so we don't see a lapse, but if that has to happen and it comes back in September, so be it. But I mean, you're not going to be able to come back to us with a report of where that money might go in the afternoon, you know, after we take a break here, I assume.
I assume, but I don't know.
Okay.
That's why I don't want to assume that that's not possible, so.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Supervisor Hume?
Thank you, Chair. Let me just start by asking, picking up on where we just were. Is the reason that that money goes back into fund balance is because it was associated with a contract and the end of the contract, whatever's remaining balance goes into fund balance? Okay. And so then that would not apply, say, for the extra 5 million that we put towards roads for the utility offset that I believe, at least in the case of the Harvest Water Project in South Sacramento County, have not been expended yet. Those do not return into fund balance, correct?
Correct. So that money would be transferred from the general fund to the roads fund, and it would sit in fund balance in the roads fund until it's expended.
Hallelujah. I don't want to fight for it all over again. Let me start by saying, echoing the comments of my colleagues of thanking the folks that put together the budget. But I also want to thank every department head who was asked to make some pretty tough calculations and especially giving up funded unfilled positions. While it seems like low-hanging fruit or, you know, a painless solution, nonetheless, it does remove possibilities that were hanging out there in front of them. So I appreciate that this is an austere budget year, and I've tried to scale back my wants and wishes and desires appropriately. And so, you know, a lot of my comments are more editorial in nature and not necessarily have a dollar ask associated with them. And if they do, certainly it's recognizing that we have to look at the landscape in September before any of them would come to be. And so the first one is one that I did have some conversations with the county exec about. And there is an opportunity for some surplus state property down in Elk Grove that would be made available that I would like to have us investigate converting into a Veterans Resource Center. And I think that there's some funding that we could, some grant funding that we can pursue. So I don't believe there needs to be a dollar amount associated, but I'm just saying this in an open session so that if September comes around and we do have to at least allocate some staff time or something, that that is on the radar. I do see some nodding heads from my colleagues that that would be a use that they would support, so that's good. And then the next thing that I would ask for is relative to our revenue sources, do we have a breakdown of sales tax revenue by source, whether it's, you know, fuel or...
So we, we work with a sales tax consultant, and they analyze the data from the state CDTFI Department of Tax and Fee Administration, I believe, and categorize that for us by business type? Is that the type of information you're interested in?
Yeah, so specifically what I'm wondering is if we would be able to sort of carve out how much sales tax revenue comes out of agriculture?
Something I'd have to look into. I don't know the answer off the top of my head, but I think we likely could if by business type, by associated business type.
And would, so would farming be a type of business? I would assume.
I'm not sure what the categories are.
Fair enough.
I'll look into that and get back to you.
My thinking behind that is, in trying to crack this nut on the fact that District Five will never compete for roadway funds, I think if we look at farm-to-market necessity, that might be one of the ways that we build the case on getting that funding is, because I got to imagine it's a pretty large chunk by commodity that is coming into the coffers. Again, not for this budget and not even for September. Then now my next two items, or three items really, actually two items, have to do with sort of what is being recommended as net county cost. And the two items are correctional health services and the DC FAST Welcome Homes. And I don't have anything in particular to say about that, except that I know that there have been substantive issues with both of those deliveries with respect to correctional health and some of the problems that are going over there relative to the consent decree, as well as, you know, we had some folks smuggling contraband into the, so anyway, as we take these costs into our own obligations, I just want to make sure that we are providing the appropriate oversight. And in particular with the Welcome Homes, I mean, we started going back to the wet center and the melee that ensued from that, which I think actually was a pretty decent arrangement. You know, it seems to still be fraught with issues. And so if we're going to add $3 million of our own money to our own obligations, I want to make sure that we are being as prudent with that money as possible. And then in community development, there's a growth, a recommended growth request relative to two FTEs for planning technicians. And I've heard Deputy County Executive Fonti refer to like an ombudsman-type program, or at least that's the term that I've used in the past. Does this go towards that effort of kind of shepherding people through the system?
Not directly, no. So we have Dave DeFonti, Deputy County Executive. We have what we call our Development Program Managers Program, and we have staff allocated to that program. So by way of these two positions you just mentioned, as well as a third, DOT is going to be funding a senior planner position to address essentially all the DOT projects that have to come through, planning and environmental review particularly. Those three positions are going to help free up other staff's time to work on higher value things. We also have positions in here to help with PRA requests as well. So indirectly, that's going to have a significant effect of taking that, for lack of a better term, lower-level work off of more experienced staff so they can focus on those higher value targets.
Okay. Not in this budget, again, because I recognize the austerity of the times, but we've, a couple of us have talked about a resource that would be available to the supervisors as a shared resource that would act as that shepherd, act as the one point of contact either for our staff or for members of the public that can then be referred through the different county departments as kind of a, you know, one-stop solution. So if we can roll these into that, or if this would be a resource to that, but again, that's going forward in the future. And then finally, I do support looking at the solution for the Ukrainian refugee balance. And I do want to just keep out there that the RBF facility at RCCC, I do prioritize getting that back online. And then the two things that for September, we can have a further discussion, but I, it was a compelling case that the DA made relative to those positions and what they would do. I don't know that I necessarily agree that it must be a one-for-one with the public defender's office, because I think not every case engages a public defender. If we want to also look at increasing the public defender's budget, that's fine. And then I'd had some conversations a while ago with Annette Bedsworth relative to the Animal Care Surgery Center at the Bradshaw Facility. And the space is there, and it would be a conversion of some underutilized space to expand their surgery center so that they can do more spay and neuter. I know that there's a funding gap there, so I'd just like to put that kind of on the radar that maybe in September, if, you know, things are rosier than we anticipate, that we look at bridging that gap so that we can make that conversion happen. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor. Supervisor Frost?
Oh, first, I want to thank County Executive David Villanueva and Amanda Thomas and all the deputy county executives for, I know that the budget every year is sort of a, it goes throughout the year. It's not just one day. And I especially want to thank all the department leads who have tried really hard this year to find efficiencies and figure out how to prop up and strengthen our budget. And I also want to thank all the county staff who have been a big part of a cultural shift under the leadership of David Villanueva, our county executive, who, and I know change isn't always easy. And I've received different contacts from different employees, some good, some frustrated, but, so change isn't always easy, but I wanted to acknowledge that the cultural change that you're making is moving in a positive direction, and thank you for your leadership. I want to also say that having been a part of the budget process, and this is my last budget, over the years, I believe that the work that you're doing to have workshops with the public, I remember when there would be 100 or 200 people here in public comment mad about how they wanted to be involved in the budget process and how we should be spending the money, and we don't really have that anymore. And I think it's because the county staff have done such a good job with those, and I guess, Amanda, someone is doing something that's kind of letting, kind of giving people, informing people more about how the budget works, and I think it's making it a lot easier on everyone. So that, I've noticed a huge difference. I want to thank you, David, for prioritizing firewise communities in your, you know, ongoing. I know there's not maybe specific funding in this budget, and there's not necessarily things that we can do from a legal standpoint. We're still trying to work with, at the state level, but I also am very pleased around our prioritization of roads and funding road maintenance, which we are, you know, always underfunded. I'm hoping that, you know, over time, I know there's 800 to 1,000 rooftops going up on the southeast side of Sacramento County, and it's growing fast. And oftentimes with roads, it has to grow before the counts get to a place where you have to do something about it. But I know, I want to thank Department of Transportation. They've been very cooperative in saying, well, we'll try to help if you need stop signs and as soon as we can figure out how to realign that road and put that signal in. So I know that time is going to come, and I'm hoping we can work toward just some of those little fixes that will make the southeast county a little bit safer for egress in the event of a fire hazard. I'm supportive of the DA's requests. I support the public defender in her requests, and not only, you know, obviously, she made a point about it's a constitutional, you know, responsibility, but it would work out great if they have better accommodations. I think we've talked for a couple of years about how they're growing, running out of room down in that office. I was, I was sitting up and listening when the undersheriff was talking about the May's Consent Decree, the concerns that the sheriff has, the possibility that increased population could change, you know, the requirements of what we need and are we building today for what is going to be needed, like five minutes after we get it built, basically. And I hope that we can work closely with the sheriff, maybe, maybe the sheriff and the undersheriff, you know, through their eyes, through public safety's eyes, they see something different than we see, and they can help us improve our, what we're bringing. And I thought it was interesting that they specifically talked about medical and mental health and that there would not be enough. And so I think we should look at that. I support Black Child Legacy, that there's been so many wonderful things done, and I think it's important to formally memorialize a path forward for them so they know that the funding is going to be there and they can make plans. I also think we should be a good partner for downtown security with the City of Sacramento. Regarding Ukraine community, I have seen a great deal of, I have a huge Ukraine community in my district, and they have really wrapped around the refugees, and they're doing a lot. I mean, there are literally people in the Ukraine community who are bringing strangers into their home and thinking they're going to have them for a couple of months and it's ending up being a year, and they're like, is there anything you can do? And I know Siobhan knows about this because we've talked over time. And I was wondering if, you know, he keeps talking about the extended contract, but we did extend it the other day, the ARPA funding. So was that part of what he was talking about?
I don't believe the contract that he was referring to today was extended. We extended it. I think it was originally issued in '22, '23, and we extended it for '23, '24, which ended on June 30, which will end on June 30 of 2024.
Okay, so I'm thinking of ARPA funding, and he's thinking of something else, so...
I'm not sure of ARPA money off the top of my head.
Okay. I might be thinking of something else. Well, I guess, I think if there's a way, I, you know, the refugees that come here, it doesn't matter if they're Ukraine or Afghan or Slavic or, you know, they need help to integrate, and so I support finding ways to help them. And I don't have any other asks or extra asks, and I just, but I just want to thank you for making this such an easy process, David and Amanda and everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Couple things. I'll, as my colleagues have, kind of point towards September with one of them, and that's Mr. Arnwein's proposal on the, this is NorCal resist, but he said it doesn't have, you know, it could be anybody. I think that's an intriguing, I've actually met with him and talked with him about it. It's an intriguing concept that they're doing in other communities. So I'd like to look at something like that as a pilot. What he gave us is $500,000. I don't know that it needs to be $500,000, but just, I'd like to look at some kind of a pilot to, and get the data on, you know, maybe do it for a year and see what happens. I think it's an interesting program. So again, that's not for today. I do want to give a heads up that kind of in the same position as the contract expiring, we funded largely through ARPA. We funded a program through the Asian Chamber of Commerce, which worked in all of our districts with the chambers, the local chambers of commerce, as well as the PBIDS. The data I have seen was very impressive. They have come to us and asked that we continue that program. They have scaled the cost back by about half because we've already got the infrastructure in place. I've been talking with Economic Development, Crystal's working with the chamber to, because, you know, like any new program, there were bumps in the road at the beginning that they have worked out largely, but Crystal has some very good ideas how we can make it even more efficient and better and meet our needs, which the Asian Chamber is very interested in pursuing that. The cost, like I said, would be about half. And here's the reason, one of the reasons I'm proposing this, not today, but I'd like to, I don't think I can wait till September because I believe we're going to fall on the same problem of a contract expiring and then having to, you can't just turn off...
the same problem of a contract expiring and then having to, you can't just turn off the lights and turn it back on. It's not a flip of a switch with a program like that. We have, because you have people in place. So I would like to come forward with a budget augmentation once Crystal has had an opportunity to evaluate the proposal. And so I'm going to be asked that that will be agendized relatively soon. And they'll also have the data to show what they have done in the last year. And then for, as far as anything to date that I would be asking for, I would like to see two positions. One, in the district attorney's office in narcotics. It doesn't have to be as specific. Supervisor Serna is correct. Meth is a huge problem in this county, but directed toward, you know, a narcotics attorney, which would be somewhere in the 250 range, I think. And I do agree, and my deceased father, the defense attorney, would insist that we also do add a position at the same time to the public defender. Those would be the two asks I have for today, if no one up here has any huge problems with that. Okay, Supervisor Frost.
Are you done?
Sure.
I just wanted to also say I would like to go on record as I do not support the extended use of an emergency use authorization or policy relating to continuing the emergency use authorization on the shot.
Okay, so, looks like, oh, nope. Supervisor Serna.
I just wanted to quickly, and Supervisor Hume reminded me, thank you for putting the two FTEs in planning, number one, and then number two, also a big thank you on putting in the recommended budget, back in the recommended budget, funds for parenting, mandatory parenting classes. Appreciate that.
Great, thank you. That's all I have from the dais. How much time you need?
Maybe 2:15.
We will adjourn till 2:15, recess to 2:15.
Thank you, everyone.
All right, we'll come back to order with the please, would the please clerk the roll? It's been a day.
Supervisor Serna.
Here.
Desmond.
Frost.
Here.
Hume.
Kennedy.
Here.
And you have a quorum.
Thank you. All right. Mr. Villanueva.
Yes, sir. Thank you. We huddled back up on the seventh floor and have a couple of documents. We have two things that we would like to add, changes to the resolution that we'll look to approve here in a minute. But we basically broke down the asks into three different, or two different categories. There's a host of things that you've asked me to do that doesn't necessarily involve the budget, and if that's okay with you, just trust that I captured them all, and we're going to be working on them. Or if you'd like, I can go through each and every one of them if you'd like. Okay. The other option, not the other option, so then to start off with, then I'll pass it back over to Amanda. There's amendment to the resolution and then some positions that you've asked us to fund in July.
Yes, so Amanda Thomas, Chief Fiscal Officer. As David mentioned, there's a couple of things in terms of the recommendations before you today that are changed as a result of your deliberations. So I have up here and on the screen, and hopefully you have in front of you, this is language that we're suggesting would be included in the resolution that you would be approving today with approval of the recommended budget, which is responsive to the request to make a three-year funding commitment to the Black Child Legacy campaign, and it would be directing staff to include funding in future budget recommendations.
Supervisor Serna.
Thank you. Appreciate the work to include this language. If I can make just one subtle change to the change.
Sure.
It would be indirect staff to include appropriate funding in future budget recommendations.
So adding the word appropriate?
Uh huh.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, if there aren't any other questions or changes on this language, the other change that we heard from you, and I'll ask if Metro Cable can pull up the other document, or I'm able to display it here. There we go. Oh, there it is. Was regarding funding two positions in this June budget. So one would be a principal criminal attorney position for the district attorney's office, and then a principal criminal attorney position for the public defender's office. The total ongoing appropriations associated with those two positions is $549,710. So in order to fund those appropriations, we would be reducing the recommended general fund contingency by that same amount. So going from approximately $15.1 million to approximately $14.6 million in the general fund contingency.
Thank you. Any questions?
Yes, sir.
So Amanda, does that mean that the fund balance moving forward for next fiscal year is reduced by that amount?
Well, so this is the contingency for '24, '25. So what this means is that we have, we would have $500,000 less for unanticipated needs that may occur during the year.
Gotcha. Okay. Thank you.
Okay, any others? All right, thank you. Very good work.
Okay.
Hope you enjoyed your lunch.
I did.
Supervisor Kennedy, could I add one more thing?
Yes.
Supervisor Hume brought up animal care and the hospital, expansion of the hospital. We had a chance to talk to Director Bedsworth, and what they're going to work on right now is see what they can do with the funds that they have. And in the event that more funds are needed, then we would come back and have that discussion. But we don't have a number to put on the budget, so I think if you, I'll put that in the category of I will follow up on.
Thank you. Board, have any other questions?
Just a comment.
Yes, sir.
So don't need to go into detail. I know you get it, David, in terms of the request for matching funds to the city for security. If we could get a report back at some point during the summer when we're back from recess on just, real briefly, on just how that's going, and, you know, maybe it's even something you could put at the end of an agenda under CEO comments. It doesn't necessarily need to be a consent item or anything like that. But I do appreciate, especially since Mr. Alt just walked in chambers, the fact that you've been creative in this request, and I can assure Mr. Alt that we are fully on board with matching the city. So expect to have double the resources you had yesterday for the intended purposes that we discussed this morning.
And to follow up on that, it goes without saying that, you know, when you do come back, we'll have a description, a very detailed description of what this funding's going toward. We're not just writing a check.
Yes, that's, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Of course.
All right. No other questions? No other comments from staff? A pleasure with the board?
We're looking for a motion, right?
We are looking for a motion.
I will, I will move adoption of the fiscal year '24, '25 recommended budget with the changes that have been referenced by our chief fiscal officer.
And that includes, of course, item number two in the recommended action, correct?
Correct.
All right. We have a motion in a second. Please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Congratulations. Thank you very much to all of you who worked so hard on this. Very well done.
Thanks for getting back here in time, Michael. You're always welcome here, by the way, you know?
It's not like he was at a meeting with the mayor or, you know, others.
Every time he comes in, we give him $250,000. Okay.
Thanks, Michael.
That takes us to the capital improvement plan, which would be slide 27 for you, Amanda.
So while the presentation is getting pulled up, I will just say that I had not prepared a detailed presentation on the capital improvement plan. Colin Bettis, the county's debt officer, is here today if you would like more information. But essentially, in addition to the recommended budget, we are also recommending approval of the five-year capital improvement plan, which totals $3.5 billion in project costs across the five years, with $916 million in fiscal year '24, '25. The CIP includes projects in the departments that are listed on this slide, were funded with revenue in those departments, and all of the projects have previously been reviewed by the board. In April, the board referred, the board reviewed the new and newly funded projects and referred them to the Planning Commission, and those were reviewed by the Planning Commission with no findings of inconsistency with the general plan. And funding for the fiscal year '24, '25 projects is included in the relevant department's recommended budget. So that concludes the presentation. Happy to answer any questions you have.
Any questions? Seeing none, do we have any public testimony on the CIP?
We do not.
Okay. And with that, I'll take a motion.
Move approval.
Chair will second. Please vote.
Unanimous vote.
That takes us to which, item number five?
Just county exec comments.
Thank you for, I started off the meeting today thanking all the staff and all the efforts that they did to put together the, I don't know, 10-inch binder of material that we provided to you. But I would like to close the meeting in thanking each and every one of you. Supervisor Kennedy, thank you for chairing such a great meeting, and just want to thank you all. I know this is a tough time. This is my first budget, and revenues are fairly flat and not as they've been in the last two or three years. And I appreciate the dedication of the board members and of our staff, so thank you very much.
And thank you. Any members of the board? All right, thank you very much. We're adjourned.